ACMI productions are only made possible with your support. Visit patreon.com/ACMI to learn how you can help.
It is 7:38 PM on Tuesday, June 25th, 2024. Good evening. My name is Christian Klein. I'm the Chair of the Arlington Zoning Board of Appeals. I apologize for the late start this evening. I am calling this meeting of the board to order. I would first like to confirm that all members and anticipated officials are present. So, members of the zoning board of appeals, Roger Dupont.
Here.
Patrick Hanlon.
Here.
Elaine Hoffman.
Here.
And Adam LeBlanc.
Here.
Thank you all. I will note that Daniel Riccadelli and Venka Holli are not with us this evening. Mr. Riccadelli may be able to join us later on. Joining us on behalf of the town, we have Colleen Ralston, our zoning assistant.
Here.
And then for the hearings, they're scheduled for this evening, appearing for docket 378784 Hillside Road. We have May Chang and Alan Chin. Good to have you with us again. Appearing for docket docket 3796, 49 Valentine Road, Brian Elizabeth Crowley. I don't know if they're going to join us this evening. Okay, for 296 Washington Street, Shay Cronin and Amy Farrell.
We're here.
Great. Good to have you with us. For docket 380340 Sutherland Road, we've Edward, Edward and Ramona Pompeo. Saw the name in the window earlier. Let's see their name here. Appearing for docket 3804322 Mystic Street, we have representative from RJJ Properties. Okay, and appearing for docket 3805232 Massachusetts Avenue, Lisa Cronin. They may not be here. Okay.
Hello, I am Lisa Cronin's son and we were talking with our tenant and they had informed us that they had reached out about being on the July 9th docket instead of the docket for tonight.
Yes, exactly. We will be voting to continue that hearing.
Oh, okay. Sounds good. Thank you.
Yep. So this open meeting of the Arlington zoning board of appeals is being conducted remotely, consistent with an act making appropriations for the fiscal year 2023 to provide for supplementing certain existing appropriations and for certain other activities and projects signed into law on March 29th, 2023. This act includes an extension until March 31st, 2025. The remote meeting provisions of Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 executive orders suspending certain provisions to the open meeting law, which suspended the requirement to hold all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Public bodies may continue holding meetings remotely without a quorum of the public body physically present at a meeting location, so long as they provide adequate alternative access to remote meetings. Public bodies may meet remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. An opportunity for public participation will be provided during the public comment period during each public hearing. For this meeting, the zoning board of appeals has convened a video conference via the Zoom application with online and telephone access as listed on the agenda posted to the town's website, identifying how the public may join. This meeting is being recorded and it will be broadcast by ACMI. Please be aware that attendees are participating by a variety of means. Some attendees are participating by video conference, others are participating by computer, audio, or by telephone. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you, your screen name, or another identifier. Please take care to not share personal information. Anything you broadcast may be captured by the recording. We ask that you please maintain decorum during the meeting, including displaying an appropriate background. All supporting materials that have been provided members of this body are available on the town's website unless otherwise noted. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. And as Chair, I reserve the right to take items out of order in the interest of promoting an orderly meeting. As the board will be taking up new business at this meeting, as Chair, I make the following land acknowledgement. Whereas the zoning board of appeals for the town of Arlington, Massachusetts discusses and arbitrates the use of land in Arlington, formerly known as monotomy in Algonquin word, meaning swift waters. The board hereby acknowledges that the town of Arlington is located on the ancestral lands of the Massachusetts tribe, the tribe of indigenous peoples from whom the colony, province, and Commonwealth have taken their names. We pay our respects to the ancestral bloodline of the Massachusetts tribe and their descendants who still inhabit historic Massachusetts territories today. So I'd like to start the meeting with a quick note. So starting with this meeting, the board will be changing the way it conducts its votes in order to more closely align with the requirements of the Massachusetts general law, chapter 48. At the end of the discussion of each individual hearing, the board will vote to either continue the public hearing to a specific date to continue receiving testimony on a matter, or the board will vote to close the public hearing, ending the receipt of new testimony. The board will then proceed to the next item on the agenda. Over the coming days, the board will prepare a draft decision based on the testimony received and the discussions that took place during the public hearing. And that discussion, that decision, excuse me, will be voted on at the next available meeting of the board. In practical terms, for those hearings before the board this evening, there will not be an official vote for or against your projects this evening. That vote will take place at our next available meeting when we have the draft decision to review and upon which our vote will rest. This does not change the schedule from what the way that we have previously issued decisions. It just clarifies that the initial vote is just a vote to close and not an official vote on the matter. So with that, we do not have administrative items this evening, so we'll be proceeding straight to public hearings. Before opening tonight's meeting for the public hearings, here are some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of tonight's business. After I announce each agenda item, I will ask the applicant to introduce themselves and themselves, make their presentation to the board. I will then request that members of the board ask what questions they have on the proposal. After the board's questions have been answered, I will open the meeting for public comment. At the conclusion of public comment, the board will deliberate and vote to either continue or close the public hearing. All votes will be conducted by a roll call vote. The final vote on any matter before the board will be taken at a subsequent meeting once the written decision has been drafted and provided to the board. The decision will then be filed with the town clerk, starting the 20-day appeal period under state law. After that time, the applicant may proceed with their building permit. However, under state law, no decision granted by this board shall take effect until a certified copy of the final decision has been filed with and recorded at the Middlesex South Registry of Deeds in Cambridge by the applicant. But with that, we move on to the public hearings. I will be first taking up docket 379649 Valentine Road. The board has received a written request by the applicant to withdraw their application for a special permit. And so I will, the Chair will take a motion to approve the request to withdraw the special permit application for 49 Valentine Road.
So move to Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Hanlon.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Dupont. So vote of the board to approve the request to withdraw the special permit for 49 Valentine Road. Mr. Dupont.
Aye.
Mr. Hanlon?
Aye.
Ms. Hoffman?
Aye.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye, that motion is passed. That brings us to item seven on our agenda, item docket 3805232 Massachusetts Avenue. The applicants contacted the board and indicated they were unable to have legal representation present this evening, and they have requested a continuance. Colleen, what date are they requesting a continuance to?
They would like July 9th.
Okay. So the Chair will take a motion to approve the request for a continuance for the variance application for 232 Massachusetts Avenue until Tuesday, July 9th, 2024 at 7:30 PM.
So move to Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Hanlon. Thank you, Mr. Dupont. So vote of the board to continue the application, the hearing for 232 Mass Ave. Mr. Dupont.
Aye.
Mr. Hanlon?
Aye.
Ms. Hoffman?
Aye.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye, that matter is closed or continued. Then with that, we'll return to the top of our dockets. So docket 378784 Hillside Avenue. So if I could ask the applicants to unmute themselves and tell us what they would like to do. And I understand they have submitted a revised site plan, which I will go ahead and bring up. And there we go. Ms. Chin, Mr. Chin?
Yes. Can you hear me?
We can, yes. Thank you.
Yes, this is May. After the first meeting, we went to the town, met with the building inspector. They have helped us to draw, update the the new plans to follow the bylaw. So this is the new update plan from the town inspector for us. So we will, this time we definitely like follow what they suggest us to do. And then we hope that the board will approve our new plan to solve our hacking issue. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Just to remind the board, the applicant had been with us I believe a month ago, and they had, a driveway had been created on the Hillside Avenue side within the front yard setback. And so they were, had come before the board requesting a special permit to allow it as a second driveway. The board could not accept it because it did not meet the requirements of the zoning bylaw. And at the meeting, we had discussed some options that they could pursue that would allow them to at least provide an application that met the requirements so that the board could then discuss the matter. So the plan that you see here was prepared with the assistance of inspectional services. It shows a nine by 18 parking space beyond the front line of the house facing Hillside Avenue. And so it meets the front yard requirements for Hillside, and it is also greater than 25 feet from Florence Avenue. So it meets the front yard requirements for Florence Avenue as well. So that nine by 18 space is a legitimate parking space. And then there is a driveway leading to it. To my question for the applicant, so first, so the, it appears that the driveway is designed so that there could be possibly two cars side by side in the driveway. My understanding had been that there was a specific reason for requesting an addition, one additional parking space. I wasn't sure why you were seeking two additional parking spaces when you already have a garage and driveway.
Oh, for the, for the parking and garage, we, we are two family, two family houses. So if we, if we park for ourselves, we won't have enough space for the tenants to park. And then, because we don't know, we don't know until we move in the the Arlington doesn't have overnight parking. So and then we find out it would be the very big issue for us if, if, if we cannot provide the parking for tenants. We don't have to solve the problem. This is, this is, and then also our parents will, if they, if they come, they, if they stay with us and then we don't have even not enough space either. But we will compromise ourselves that way. And then the other way, we can just give it to, give it to the tenants. If, like, if, at least I think one family, they at least would be have two cars or three cars. So I don't know how to solve the problem if we don't have the in, income. Yeah.
And so your intention is to keep the existing garage and driveway that's on Florence Avenue?
Yeah, yes, yes, yes.
So.
It will be like for our, 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 our side. And then hopefully, and then the fund that we can give it to the tenants. And then, then I think no parking will for them. I think we can run it out. And then, and then my husband had no job, so we need to just run it out for support us too. Yeah.
Okay, so there's three parking spaces, two in the garage, one in this nine by 18 area. And then we have two driveways that are two cars wide, effectively is what we have on the plan. Okay. Are there any questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Hanlon?
So when I looked it up on the GIS, this is an R1 in the R1 district, isn't it? Am I wrong about that?
I am looking at the application. Apologize, it is not showing up on the application. Quickly need to check the town.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I believe that this property is in the R1 district.
Within the R1?
Yeah, based on the zoning map.
Okay.
So what I'm a little bit, what I'd like to have a little more explanation about is we've had, the application itself says that there are three dwelling units in it, which I'm guessing is probably a mistake. But we've talked here in so far about three, at least two different tenants plus the applicants. And I'm just wondering how this is actually laid out. Is this genuinely a house that has more than one dwelling unit in it? Or are rooms being let out? Obviously, there's a considerable amount of parking pressure that is being created by having, by, by, you know, tenants and the residents themselves. And I'm a little bit unclear as to why it is we have all these tenants.
Ms. Chin, how many units are in the building presently?
Two.
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 Okay. So the application says three. So that's why we wanted to confirm.
Two.
It is just two.
So if this is R1, why is there two? Is this prior non-conforming use or? I'm a little, I'm not sure I understand what the, what the legal setup is.
So that may be more of a question for for inspectional services. I don't know the specific history as to why there are two units existing. The number of, the assessor's report indicates there's two units. So certainly that's a, that may very well be a pre-existing use on that property. Certainly the other buildings on that corner all appear to just be a single family.
Right. I gather, Mr. Chairman, we have the chat open and I've, and at least one, one of the people has been providing helpful information. But we were going to have public comment and probably for the purpose of the record, since we don't usually use the chat and it's not, isn't becoming a part of the record, probably things like that ought to be dealt with publicly by participating in the public, in the public participation that we'll get to shortly. So can I add, there's in the application, there is a reference to elderly people who consider the entrance that, that the applicants are talking about, the, the hillside driveway to be safer. Are those people who, are those your parents that you were talking about, who might at some point come move in with you? Or is this somebody who's already there and who is?
My, my parents, my, my parents would be, they come to watch all my, to take care of my kids while I'm, I'm working too.
I see. So they visit each day, basically?
Not each day, but at least three, three days.
I see. And do they live there during overnight or do they?
Yes, yes, yeah. They, they will overnight too. Yes, yes.
And in looking at the, I'm having a hard time understanding where the safety issue is. If you could explain.
Sure, sure.
Why is they feel that it's unsafe? It doesn't look very unsafe.
The safety when the, the safety would be like, if, or, or we planning that, because like, my husband truck, if they, the, the, the thunder, the truck, if they, or I can switch. So I mean, if we have the other side, my, my husband truck also can move to the, the hillside. So when we come out during the busy time, during the school days, in the morning, if we drop off our kids, that then would be like more safer to come out because always the street on Florence Street would be like so super, super busy during 7:30 to during the school, school hour, 7:30 to, to around 8:30. So if, if we come out from the, the hillside, there's a two-stop sign so that we can come. The big, they can see us, the student also can see, it won't be like block them because the children's really like, like a young. I think the trucks would be more like difficult to see for the eye level. But for my own car would be easier because I'm, I'm, it's much smaller to, to come out. So for my car, it would be easier to, for, no problem to come out either size. Yes. Yeah. But usually for the pit time is from morning and after school, that, that kind of hours, the Florence Street would be very, very like busy street for the students. For, I mean, for the, yes, yes, for the students, yes.
Mr. Chairman, that's all I have for now.
Thanks, Mr. Hanlon. Are there other questions from members of the board?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. LeBlanc?
One question I still had or a comment was, I'm not convinced about the, the 20-foot width of the driveway. I, I think it's just adding a front yard parking spot there. And that was kind of our point of contention at our last meeting about this. So if this was something that we would consider, I would propose that, you know, we restrict the width of the driveway that leads to the parking spot, so that way it doesn't invite the kind of additional quote-unquote parking spot that's in the driveway.
Great, thank you. Anything else from the board? Seeing none. I'm now going to be opening the meeting for public comment. Public questions and comments will be taken as they relate to the matter at hand and should be directed to the board for the purpose of informing its decision. Members of the public will be granted time to ask questions and make comments. Members of the public who wish to speak should digitally raise their hand using the button on the reactions tab in the Zoom application. Those calling in by phone, please dial star nine to indicate you would like to speak. You'll be called upon by the Chair. You'll be asked to give your name and address to the record, and you'll be given time for your questions and comments. All questions are to be addressed through the Chair. Please remember to speak clearly. For anyone wishing to address the board a second time during any particular hearing, the Chair will allow those wishing to speak for the first time to be called upon first. And once all questions and comments have been addressed or an allocated time has ended, the public comment period shall be closed. And the Chair and staff will do our best to show any documents being discussed. So with that, are there any members of the public who wish to address the board in regards to 84 Hillside Avenue? We have Mr. Grant Cook.
Hi, Grant Cook. Can you hear me?
We can, sir.
Yeah, just 16 Waltham Ave. Just commenting on your earlier discussion, I was the one chatting. Yeah, there's two families all over the Dallan District, 45 Hillside, the two family as well. So although it is a single-family area, there's plenty of two families that must predate the zoning or something. So that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who wish to address this hearing? One's going twice. Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the public comment period for this specific hearing. Board will now discuss findings and either vote to close the hearing or recommend a continuance. So what the board has before it is a request for a second driveway, which the board is allowed to approve by a special permit under section 6110A. The board does, in addition to the special permit findings, the board is required to make three additional findings. One is that the second driveway may be added in a manner that avoids an undue concentration of population. The second is that a second driveway may be added in a manner that allows adequate provision of transportation. And the third is that a second driveway may be added in a manner that conserves the value of land and buildings in the vicinity. So in reviewing this application, so the existing garage and driveway facing Florence Avenue, it's two parking spaces, but it can accommodate four cars because there could be two cars in the garage and two cars in the, in the driveway leading to the garage. And then the request is for an additional driveway, which provides, adds one parking space, but provides three spaces for cars to be off-street overnight. So that would be a total of seven cars that could be accommodated on this site, which to me feels like a very high number, even for a two-family house. And I and I particularly appreciate Mr. LeBlanc's question about the, the width on the driveway. That's really something the board can consider. The board can also consider some form of screening to make sure, to try to minimize the visibility of anything should the board move to, to approve. Ms. Chin?
Yes, since the garage, I think the old, old build, the garage is not fit to our, 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 our truck. Too, too small. And then also the, our, our, our Toyota, the, the, the big van, van also cannot go in either. So those two, I think they built in the old time is, is very small. We cannot.
SUV.
As, as we, we have, since we have a family, the SUV cannot fit in the
Garage.
The, the garage. Yeah. So we always park outside too. Yeah, yeah. I mean, part of the driveways too. Yeah.
But it would, but with a different vehicle, it would be possible to occupy the garage with a car.
Yeah, for the small one, I think. For the, yeah, for the small.
Yeah, but now people always drive the SUV.
Yeah, because we have a big family here. Yeah, because we, we have a big family here, yeah.
Okay. So I'm curious what the board thinks about, um, the particular findings that we need to make in regards to section three, one, ten, A. Especially, I don't, and there's one question that, that sticks in my mind is this isn't R one district, but it, it is a two-family house. So there is already sort of additional, um, residential use on this property. And one of the findings that we need to make is that the driveway can be added in a manner that avoids an undue concentration of population. Now, just ask the members of the board sort of what they feel about that particular, um, finding. Uh, the other two findings are a little more straightforward, um, that it can be added in a in a manner that allows for adequate provision of transportation. And then it can be added in a manner that conserves the value of land and buildings is something that we could address. So I'm curious what other members of board feel about this, um, finding we need to make about an undue concentration of population.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Dupont.
So I guess I'm a little bit unclear as to how to interpret that phrasing. I mean, your comment was that it would be seven spaces in total with the four on Florence and then the additional three on Hillside. And do you think that the reference to the undue concentration of population has to do with the fact that there would be three more spaces permitted? I'm not sure how that equates to population. So, you know, there's not a, a straight, a straight line for me from that to there. However, I just remember a couple of things from the last meeting. One was the concern, you know, to what extent it's, you know, it is, um, you know, a serious concern was about the fact that, you know, there were people, um, if people were parking in the driveway on Florence, that there were a lot of, uh, there's a lot of foot traffic with students coming up and down the sidewalk. And so you know, there was that part of it. And I thought that, you know, part of the rationale at the time was that it would alleviate some of the use of that space on Florence. Um, and then the second thing that I think that we talked about, and I realized that this has been revamped somewhat, was you know, how close to the intersection of Hillside and, uh, Florence was that original proposal, right? Because it was over in the corner. Has that changed substantially, Mr. Chairman, in terms of the location of the, what we talked of as a pad, I believe? And then is this now being moved down Hillside further?
So this will be further from the corner, um, that currently, um, I think pad is over twenty feet wide, um, and does not come all the way over to the house. A little more isolated in the yard. Um, I don't know the exact dimension it is off the corner of the property. Um, the proposal here with a twenty-foot driveway, um, is that there would be fourteen feet from the edge of the driveway or, uh, twelve feet from the corner of the curb to the corner. And if the driveway was held at nine feet, then it would be eleven feet farther from the cur- from the corner.
As opposed to the twenty?
Yeah.
So just a straight shot nine feet in width all the way to the street as opposed to having it expanded?
Correct. That would, um, provide for twenty-five feet from the side of the driveway to the corner, possibly a little bit more because the site is slightly trapezoidal.
And that would, Chairman, could I just interrupt for a second? It, it would be helpful for those of us who are trying to follow this conversation, if you could put the the plot plan on the screen.
Absolutely. Apologize for that. There we are.
So, Mr. Chairman, what you were just describing is effectively extending that eighteen-foot line straight down to the street and eliminating that additional width where it's just twenty feet.
Correct. So if this was maintained as a single wi- car width wide, um, then there would be twenty-five feet to the corner plus whatever amount of space there is past the edge of the property to the, to the, um, curb.
So that, that just, that just results in two spaces on Hillside and then still four on Florence.
That is correct.
Okay.
For a two-family house.
Right. Where the requirements are just one space per unit, correct?
Correct.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hamlin.
Um, I feel a little bit uncomfortable about relying on, it seems to me that in substance, there are a lot of cars here. And when we discussed why it is we needed a lot of cars, it was, as May said, I think there are a lot of people here. And it's, I don't necessarily think it's our place to be dis- discouraging the people. Um, but I am concerned about the cars and I'm concerned about the impact of that many cars, if those spaces are actually being used. Uh, the effect that that has, maybe not so much on the property values nearby, but, but when we get to the section three point, three point three to its consistent, we, its consistency with the zoning district. And as the chair pointed out, the zoning district is R one. So already you're dealing with a non-conforming use and higher density than is the typical density. And then you're accommodating it through what I think is a large number of parking spaces even for a two-family. And I feel pretty sympathetic to Mr. Blank's, LeBlanc's point of view, that if we were ready to, to do this, um, that we would be better off having a normally sized driveway, um, uh, with only two parking spaces allotted to it on the Hillside side. That, that should be enough. It's already more than is typical for, uh, for, uh, a dwelling unit, there are dwelling this size. And, uh, I would put it really on, on three point, three point three F rather than on the concentration here. But in substance, it's a similar point.
Well, so reviewing the findings then the board needs to make, uh, so the first finding would be that the second driveway may be added in a manner that avoids an undue concentration of population. Um, I think several members have spoken to, um, narrowing the proposed driveway from twenty feet at the curb to being nine feet for its entire length. Um, that would still allow the applicant to have two cars, um, at that driveway. And, uh, they would still be able to park additional vehicles in their existing driveway, uh, down the street. Um, and having two cars, one after the other, it's a fairly typical pattern for, uh, Arlington in general and, um, and in this neighborhood as well, um. And as it was, was pointed out by Mr. Hamlin, this is a two-family house in a single-family district, so it is a non-conforming use. Um, but the board has heard applicants in the past, uh, requesting a second driveway for a two-family in order to, uh, facilitate the usage of the two families. Some of those have been approved, some have not, um. But allowing for, uh, the parking of appropriate vehicles, uh, for the two units, um, would not be increasing the concentration of population on the site. The second is that the second driveway may be added in a manner that allows for adequate provision of transportation. So there would, adding the second driveway would, there would certainly be adequate transportation, uh, to and from the building. Um, we would not be restricting them to anything below, uh, what is already, um, what is allowed under the code. And, uh, second driveway may be added in a manner that conserves the value of land and buildings in the vicinity. Um, so this one I'm a little more concerned about, um, because currently it is a large open, uh, yard and the addition of the driveway will, uh, basically have cars parking in the yard, which even though it's not technically correct, it's what it appears like, um. So when the, when it comes time to discuss conditions, um, I think it would be appropriate for the board to discuss if there are conditions, um, that could be imposed in regards to landscaping and buffering, uh, that would minimize the appearance of the driveway and, um, assist in maintaining and conserving the value of the land, um, and the property on adjacent, the, uh, excuse me, the value of land and buildings in the vicinity. And then, so those are the special findings in regards to, uh, a second driveway, but then the general findings that need to be uh, found by the board. The first is that the adverse effects of the proposed use will not outweigh its beneficial impacts. So the board would need to find that the addition of, uh, the driveway on Hillside would not, um, be more detrimental to the neighborhood, um, than the condition without a driveway, um, on that, in that area. Board would need to find that the requested use is allowed or allowed by special permit in the district, which, which it is on special permit under six, one, ten, A. Uh, the third is that the requested use is essential or desirable to the public convenience or welfare. In general, allowing, uh, homeowners to, um, enjoy their property, um, in a manner befitting them is a general good. Um, as the applicants have stated, the garage itself was designed when cars were very different than they are today. Um, and it is difficult to utilize the garage. Um, they do have a paved driveway in front of that garage, which they may be able to park vehicles in, um, but having a driveway off of Hillside Avenue that is, uh, with spaces that are large enough to accommodate, uh, the larger vehicles that are more typical in Arlington today, um, may be appropriate in this situation. Uh, the requested use will not create undue traffic congestion or impair pedestrian safety. Uh, as the applicant has stated, one of the primary reasons they are requesting this change is to actually improve pedestrian safety. Uh, they have a lot of concerns about, uh, the traffic on Florence Avenue, particularly uh, traffic heading towards, uh, the nearby school, which includes, uh, students who are going along the sidewalk. Uh, this would move the vehicles from that, uh, more busy condition to being on Hillside Avenue, which, um, has far less pedestrian traffic, um, than Florence Avenue does. Um, next is why the requested use will not overload any public systems. So the creation of this driveway, uh, will require review by the, um, engineering division, should it be approved? Uh, because of the size of, um, the additional asphalt that does, excuse me, not the additional asphalt, the additional driveway that is being proposed. And so that can be alleviated by requesting that, rather than the driveway being, uh, made impervious, that, um, the board could condition that the, if the driveway was to be paved impervious, that that may be something the board could request by, um, condition. Um, otherwise, there's no other public systems that would be, um, impacted. How special regulations for the requested use are fulfilled, those were those three findings that we discussed earlier. Uh, why the requested use will not impair the character or integrity of the district. Um, so this is the, one of the bigger ones. Um, I think for me, the big issue has to do with, um, if the board is to allow this driveway, that it be adequately screened from Florence Avenue, um, and that that landscaping, um, be of sufficient depth and height, um, as is appropriate for the the, the vehicles that would be parked there because there is already, um, vehicle parking on Florence Avenue, uh, for this property. Uh, then there's the requested use will not be detrimental to the public health or welfare. Having a driveway, uh, should not impact the health or welfare, um, beyond the, uh, what is already impacting the health and welfare of the district, which is the, the, the existence of the cars and the um, the subsequent environmental and, um, impacts that such would brings with it. And then the last is why the requested use will not cause excess of use detrimental to the neighborhood. And as Mr. Hamlin sort of noted, this is sort of the crux of this is will the, will the addition of, um, these additional parking spaces on Hillside Avenue, will that cause an excess of accessory parking, which would be detrimental to the neighborhood? So these are the findings the board needs to make, um, and then, so the board believe that those findings have been met, um, there are specific conditions. So, but I would first, uh, ask members of the board, um, what they feel about those findings and if they've, they believe that the application before us um, would allow us to make those findings.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hamlin.
I think that the, I mean, the, the, the big finding we're supposed to make is whether the benefits of the application outweigh the disadvantages, this, and that sort of is at the heading of section three point, three point three. And I'm a little skeptical about the alleged advantages, but certainly they, they are important for the objectives of the applicant. Uh, and to some extent, as the chair pointed out, they're, uh, helpful in basically taking a house that that it was not constructed for modern conditions and making them more adequate, uh, going forward. And that is, and that is something that we have in the past thought of as a sufficient public benefit. Um, to me, that weighs relatively lightly. Uh, and I feel that it would be outweighed by going forward, even with screening uh, with as many parking spaces as are proposed. Uh, and consequently, I think that we need to have a condition, uh, such as the one suggested by Mr. LeBlanc, um, that limits the width of the, uh, of the Hillside parking space that will have the advantage of avoiding, uh, as many cars there. It, it won't look like a great big yard with a zillion cars in it, which is something that is widely thought of as being an unattractive thing in a community such as ours. And it also, if there is any kind of an issue with being too close to, with, with, of, of having sufficient offset from Florence to make sure you have site distances and so forth, uh, we've often found that, that, uh, even in the provision of adequate transportation, that that sort of thing is a consideration. And if it's a consideration here, as somebody, as people have raised, it would be more easily met by reducing the width of the parking space, uh, in the way that Mr. LeBlanc has suggested. So for me, the key thing is, I mean, I'm all in favor of the screening and so forth, but for me, the key thing is to relieve somewhat what I think of as on the negative side of the scale by, by, uh, conditioning it in accordance to Mr. LeBlanc's suggestion.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Dupont.
So I just wanted to sort of visit a couple of sections of the bylaw. And I, I believe that when we talk about screening, you know, we have to look at visibility and five point, three point one. You know, we have to look at visibility in five point three point one two. And if I read that correctly, and tell me if somehow I've got this wrong. It seems to me like. It seems to me like there's also a limitation on the height of any screening to two and a half feet. If I'm not mistaken.
I think that's only within five feet of the curb.
Yeah, let me. Five point three point one point two. I was just trying to read that quickly. So it says. No structure of vegetation shall be. Over two and a half feet. Above the adjacent ground within five feet, so you're right about that part of it. But that's just a consideration that has to be. You know, has to be respected as far as if anybody plants anything. So there's that, and then the other question I had. Has to do with. Six point one point eleven C seven, which is just the. Requirement that. I'm trying to get the language here, if you bear with me just a minute. With the distance from the curb from the intersecting street. And I I just want to make sure that I understand that correctly and that. That also is being observed, so. That's six point one point eleven C seven, and it says any portion or entrance. Where exit of a driveway shall not be closer than fifty feet to the curb line of an intersecting street. And I I wanted to know based upon the drawing that we have. First of all, is that something that we need to make sure is observed, and if so. Is that something that is met by the? Proposal here, even if. It is reduced to, you know, nine feet going all the way to the street. So. So that's my question, does this work, does this fifty feet? Work and is it applicable?
You said that's six one eleven.
C seven.
Six one eleven, so sick parking and loading space standards. So see all parking and loading areas containing over five spaces, so this is actually this is.
This is just.
This only applies to parking areas containing over five spaces.
All right, thanks for that, because I was. Not sure. Oh, okay, yeah, see, okay, thank you, never mind.
I'm just jotting down conditions here as they were spoken.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Hoffman.
I I agree with the comments about narrowing it to not from twenty to nines, we've been talking about quite a lot. And it. That's a reduction of an existing condition at this point, is that right? Like the new driveway already exists?
So the they put down an asphalt pad. But it isn't, it it was not done to the. It was not done with a special permit, so therefore it's not legitimate construction.
Right, right, okay, so some of what we're talking about is an extension of what exists and some of it is a removal.
So where this would be, it does overlap somewhat, I think where that pad is today.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Hamlin.
I'm trying to do at one point, there was a discussion of. I think the chair mentioned. Asking for impervious, excuse me, for pervious pavement, right, it's impervious now. And. I'm wondering whether as a practical matter, no matter what we do, the existing pad is going to have to be removed and replaced by something else. Or whether we're talking about a situation where they're going to be trying to preserve as much of what they already have. As possible, because the degree of burden of going to a pervious surface. Is very different if it means that they can't use anything of what they have now, but if they're going to have to remove that anyway. Then it's it's more attractive as something to be kept in mind. So should the. Just to have said it clearly is that, you know, we've been talking about the cars, but I'm concerned that there's a lot of asphalt that's implied in this plan. And that itself has got a negative effect on the community.
Okay, so. Should the board? Be inclined to make the required findings? There are several conditions, both standard and specific that I think the board should consider. The first would of the standard conditions is that the plans and specifications approved by the board for the special permit. Shall be the final plans and specifications submitted to the building inspector of the town of Arlington in connection with this application for zoning relief. There shall be no deviation during construction from approved plans and specifications without the express written approval of the Arlington zoning board of appeals. The second is that the building inspectors hereby notify there to monitor the site and should proceed with appropriate enforcement procedures at any time they determine that violations are present. Building inspector shall proceed under section three point one of the zoning by law and under the provisions of chapter forty, section twenty one D of the Massachusetts general laws. And institute non criminal complaints if necessary, the building inspector may also approve and institute appropriate criminal action also in accordance with section three point one. And the standard number three is that the board shall maintain continuing jurisdiction with respect to this special permit grant. And then there are some additional conditions that have come up over the course of this hearing. So one would be that the width. Of the driveway and parking space is limited to nine feet. Second is that the applicant shall provide and maintain a landscaping bed on the Florence Avenue side of the driveway and parking. Of at least three feet depth and a height greater than four feet, except as required under the bylaw. The third is that the applicant shall pave the new driveway with pervious materials. And the fourth is that the existing asphalt pad on Hillside Avenue is to be removed in its entirety. And the land driveway and curb are to be restored to their original condition. And then. I'd been considering whether the board needs to make any statements in regards to. Excuse me. Providing a final site, providing a revised site plan. Because they will need to file that with the. Registry of deeds, but I don't know if that's something that the board needs necessarily put in as a condition. That is just something that the applicant would be required to do because the. Whatever decision the board makes does need to be filed with the registry of deeds. And then the only other. Question I have, I will go one more time back to the site plan. Which I have now lost, where are you site plan? There you are. So the trees are not noted on this plan at the moment. There is a tree that currently sits in approximately this position here where my cursor is. But there is a second tree that's about. Right here. And so the board may want to also include. A statement that the board request the applicant work with a tree warden. To address protection. Of public shade trees.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hamlin.
I guess I have one observation and one question, the observation is that if anyone wants to quickly look at it, I believe that the tree that the chair is talking about. Appears in one of the photographs that's in the record and it's quite a substantial tree. And and the second is, is it? I mean, I'm not sure, are we? What is this is a this is a public. Shade tree. That isn't actually the place where I was looking for it, it's. One of the one of the group of three that shows where the where the pad was put in. I think maybe the first one, but in any event, what I'm wondering is whether it's enough to say requests. Requests is sort of please, and I'm not sure. Okay, that's not the substantial, this one is. And I'm wondering if we if if that looks like a public. Shade tree and and if it is. Wouldn't they be required by the tree by law to do this?
Yeah, so we could say the board requires the applicant work with the tree warden to address protection of the.
Right, well, we could say the applicant shall and then. That just makes it clear.
That works too, the applicant shall. Work with the tree warden to address protection of the public shade trees. So. In summary, what the board has before it, it's an application for a special permit under section six one ten A of the zoning by law. For a second driveway, which is something the board can approve. By making the findings required for a special permit and three additional findings found under section six one ten A. So the board has reviewed all of those findings. And in order to support those findings, the board has. Recommended a series of. Three, the three standard conditions plus an additional one, two, three, four, five conditions. Which. The five are that the applicant shall work with the tree warden to address protection of the public shade shade trees. That the width of the driveway and parking space is limited to nine feet. That the applicant shall provide and maintain a landscaping bed on the Florence Avenue side of the driveway and parking space of at least three feet deep and a. Height greater than four feet and. Greater than four feet in height, except as required under the bylaw. The applicant shall pave the new driveway with pervious materials and the existing asphalt pad on Hillside Avenue is to be removed in its entirety. And the land driveway and curb are to be restored to their original condition. Mr. Hamlin.
The chair indicated a previous condition which may or may not be necessary, but I think that. Given the amount of confusion that can happen, particularly with respect to the requirement of filing this, that. It would be helpful, even if it's only a belt and suspenders thing, to include the statement. Providing a revised site plan for. That can be filed with the. Special permit. I just encourage us to keep that six condition in there.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
One second. So that would be. Condition would be the applicant is to provide a certified site plant, certified site plan indicating and dimensioning the area. Of the proposed driveway and parking space. For filing with. The registry of deeds. Mr. Dupont.
So it was just the condition that we always have that work will be done in accordance with the plans that are submitted and they won't deviate. And and I'm wondering if then what you're just referring to now with this revised site plan. Would then be the plans that would have to be followed. Because what we have with the, you know, the red lines on it is a little confused.
So we do, so in that first standard condition. The second sentence is there shall be no deviation during construction from approved plans and specifications without the express written approval of the Arlington zoning board of appeals. I am taking our additional conditions as express written approval.
Okay, and then the only other question that I have is, I mean, we have the applicants coming to us. With a proposal for a wider driveway and we're essentially saying that we would not be in favor of granting that. And so I I do think that they should have the opportunity to respond to whether or not. You know, the request that they are making, if it is abridged, if they are willing to sort of live with that. Because we're essentially imposing that condition, but we're altering what it is that they're requesting. And I would think that they would want to say, yes, that's something we're willing to do. Because if they're not, we have an issue.
Certainly, so with that, I would ask that the applicants, so the. The board appears to be favorable to a single width driveway, but not to. The wider twenty foot width of the proposed driveway, would that? Be acceptable to you? Okay. Would note that the applicant has nodded.
Yes. So so like so it is.
Should become like a single.
Like a like a like a you mean nine feet like this, right?
Right, so that nine feet would be the full would be the.
Yes, 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 as long as we have space, we don't need ride because. The ride, we don't understand, it is the paving company, they did it for us, I I we don't understand when they. We cannot do it, but they do it, so we we thought we can, they told us they can, so we just listen what they what they told us, yeah. So so yes, yes, we are, we we will listen, we listen.
So then what the board has before it. Did the application and we now have the three standard conditions plus one, two, three. Four, five, six additional conditions. So at this point, the bore, as as we had said before, the board is not. Voting to approve or. This allow the board at this point is only voting to to close the hearing and then we will be voting on the written decision at our subsequent meeting. Are there? Any members of the board who would are concerned about the. The proposal not meeting the findings based on the conditions we have provided. Seeing none. The chair will accept a motion to close. The public hearing for docket three seven eight seven eighty four Hillside Avenue.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, Mr. Hamlin. And seconded by Mr. Dupont, so this is to close the public hearing for docket three seven eight seven eighty four Hillside Avenue. The decision will be written and we will be voting on this matter at our July ninth meeting. Mr. Hamlin.
Just assuming that I my intention on the basis of the discussion that we just had, it would be to prepare a decision for the board that. Did my best to reflect the discussion we've had and that would incorporate the conditions that were. That were discussed, so that is the nature of the draft that the board can expect at the next hearing.
Perfect. So with that, then a vote of the board to close the this public hearing, Mr. Dupont.
Aye.
Mr. Hamlin.
Aye.
Ms. Hoffman.
Aye.
Mr. LeBlanc.
Aye.
See, Mr. Riccadelli has joined us. But was not here for the entire docket. But we would ask for your vote on the motion to close the public hearing.
Sure, aye.
Thank you, and the chair votes, so that. So docket three seven eight seven is closed. So docket three, seven, eight, seven is closed. So that brings us and I I thank the applicant for coming back to us and. We will be having a vote on the the final vote on the ninth of July. So with that, find my agenda. So the next item, what you already had done. So that brings us to item four on our agenda, which is docket three, eight, zero, two. Two ninety-six Washington Street. So if I could ask the applicants to go ahead and introduce themselves and tell us what they are proposing to do.
Thank you, Chairperson Klein and the board members for consideration of our application. I'm Shayk Ronan and I'm speaking on behalf of myself and. My wife, Amy Farrell, who is also here listening and. We we're you want me to go into the the application?
Yes, please. Would you like us to display the? The drawings?
Sure, that would be helpful. I think, you know. We are looking to, you know, we're invested, members of the Arlington community. And we are looking to expand the living space of our house. So that way we can remain in it with additional ground level living space. And ability to to. Host community, you know, activity groups over at our our house, including our sports teams and. Theater group that our daughter belongs with. And we are also hoping to remodel our kitchen so that way we can. It hasn't been updated in in several decades and and it's quite small and we would like to make space. Addition as well.
Thank you. So hopefully you're seeing this is the proposed site plan. So this house is on the corner of Washington Street and Gay Street. And. The. Existing house here and then the proposal is the dashed red line. I would note. The plan does not show. The existing trees on the site. There are some rather substantial. Trees, especially. At the rear, I don't know if it's on the applicant's property or on the adjacent property. There's sort of a copse of maple and oak. In this here. And. Under the Arlington's bylaws. For a corner lot. The. Yards that face a street are considered front yards. So by because it's on a corner, it has two front yards. So this is the front yard for Gay Street. This is the front yard for Washington Street. And then there's one side and one rear. And my understanding from the table is that this. Is considered the rear yard, the side that's facing of Washington Street. And then the side yard is this. Portion of the yard here that is on going up Gay Street. So that just to orient ourselves. And then so these are the existing, the the elevations of the existing house. Sort of a single family house. This is facing Gay Street. So you have the. This is the the parking level and entrance at the basement level and then the main house up above. This is the proposal. So this is again, this is the the Gay Street side. And the front is the side that faces on to Washington Street. And then the plans. So this portion of the building is the existing footprint. And this here is the proposed. Footprint of the addition. And. Again, on the main floor. The existing. Houses essentially along these lines. And then the addition here sort of wrapping around. So I wouldn't. So I know this is a this was advertised as both a special permit. And a variance. So the special permit is under five, four, two, B six, which is a large addition. So. An addition that's over seven hundred and fifty square feet outside of the existing foundation wall. Requires a special permit from the board with specific findings. And that's also advertised as a variance because. It is creating some new nonconformities with the existing. With the zoning by law. And. Those new nonconformities need to meet a higher criteria for approval from the board. And so. We will. Go ahead and sort of discuss those as we go forward. Let me back out here. So the required, so there's. We were in reviewing the. The surveyor's record here, there's. A little quirk in how they did things. So the front yard on Washington Street, as I find out here, the required setback is twenty-five feet. It appears that. The existing is twenty-seven point two. And they are proposing to reduce that to twenty-three feet. Which is less than what's required. But that will only be an open porch. And. An open porch is allowed to extend into a required setback. So we would need to review that section just to confirm that. This is meeting that criteria. So this would not require a variance, but this would be allowed by right. Second is the front yard on Gay Street. So it's required to be twenty-five feet. It's existing at twenty-six point eight. In this case, the addition. Is coming into the setback. So fifteen point three is to the open porch, but it's anticipated that this is. Around seventeen feet. So it's a reduction of the required setback. From twenty-five feet down to seventeen feet that would require a variance under the bylaw. The existing driveway. Has parking on it. They would be moving the parking closer to the street. Which. Is essentially an extension of an existing nonconformity. Driveways are not, parking spaces are not allowed to be in the front yard setback, but that is the existing condition at the house. And so. The this could be approved by special permit because it is an existing nonconforming condition. And the board is allowed to. Approve that with a finding that it is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. Then here on the side. The required setback is ten feet. They're proposing fifteen, so that's. Does not create any issues at all. And then the rear yard is where it's a little quirky. So. The depth. Of the rear yard. So the depth of the rear yard is twenty feet or. Twenty percent of the depth of the lot. So the depth of the lot is ninety-two feet. And so ten percent of that. Is believe the seventeen point one, or so excuse me, eighteen point four, as is listed here on the drawings. But the existing is twenty-two point three. For some reason, the rear and side yards here are reversed. And so. There's no change proposed to the rear yard. So that is not an issue. So the. The things that the board needs to. To determine. One is the large addition. Number two is the relocation of the parking space. Those are both fall under special permits. And then the third is the variance. For the extension for the addition that is proposed in the front yard setback. So that is the proposal. That the board has before us.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hanlon.
Here's one question. In terms of the porch, I can't, I'm too far away from my screen to see exactly what the distance is, but. I take it that the. Extension of the porch into the. Minimum by law is. Is less than the amount that's required for a special permit. I've forgotten exactly how far it can go out by right.
I'm looking that up right now under section five, three, nine, A. So porches. Not more than twenty-five square feet in floor area or more than one story high, which do not project more than. Three and one half feet beyond the line of the foundation, while may extend beyond the minimum yard regulations. Otherwise provided for the district which subject is built. Porches and enclosed entrances larger than allowed above may be extended. Into the minimum yard regulations otherwise provided for the district by special permit. So the board. Would need, because it's four feet rather than three and a half feet, the board would be required to. Also make a finding on that as well.
Thank you.
Are there questions or comments from the board?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Riccadelli.
I have a I have a question about. The retaining walls on the sort of, I I guess the Gay Street frontage of the the proposed addition. So it it looked like there are some existing retaining walls where there's the existing parking area. And it looks like in the in the new plan, there's some retaining walls there as well. I just wanted to clarify from the applicant. Does the parking occur? I don't see them on the site plan. Is the parking within those? New or retaining walls and are those new? Are they being reconstructed? What's what is the plan there? Yeah, thanks for the question. They the parking does occur within those existing retaining walls. There's cinnablock retaining walls. That were put in some time ago and they are. They do need repair, if not reconstruction, and they would be very similar to the existing walls. But with upgraded materials and and a better curb appeal. Okay, so that that expanded parking that the chair mentioned, we you'd basically be moving that. Retaining wall on the far side of away from the corner further on. In order to expand that parking area, is that correct? No, actually, I think the walls would be put in essentially in the exact same space. We we're just losing some depth of our parking because we're building the addition over some of the existing. Parking space primarily. That's the land that's being affected is paved parking.
Okay. Mr. LeBlanc.
My question is, was there any exploration during kind of initial design about doing? The addition in the kind of footprint of what is considered the side yard since the setback there is much more forgiving and you. Might have the potential to not have to go through and get a variance.
So there's a there's a couple of different issues that would have prevented us from either. Moving, I'm not sure which one is the side yard, the the. Down Gay Street towards towards our neighbor that is essentially behind our house. Or towards the up. Washington Street towards the neighbor that's to our side of our house. In both cases, it would have prevented us from staying in the home. Very likely because our bedrooms are on the side of the house where we have more room to move out. And we would have had to reconstruct the entire, you know. The format when really our principal aim is to create more. Living space and a better kitchen design that sort of flows into our backyard and patio area. We also didn't want to expand towards the. You know, further down. Along Gay Street towards our neighbor house because then that would would really reduce the space between our houses and the. The the feel between. Their house and our house and the way our backyards are situated together. We felt like that would be more disruptive than the current plan. It would also eat up our, what is essentially our small backyard. Where we have patio space.
Mr. Chairman. I'm sorry, Ms. Ms. Farrell, please go ahead. You. You go first.
Sorry, thank thank you. I was just gonna also say, as the chairman noted.
Yeah, and I can, I can, I think my wife is in the car and it's gonna be hard for her to have good service, but the yeah, there would be likely that it might impact trees going in that direction, which is the. Which is something we didn't want to do. We have large oak trees that. That provide a great shade that are on the property line on that on one side of the house. We planted a new tree. Near our back patio that is growing and we also have planted several other trees along Gay Street that we. We will will be maintained in the future.
Chairman.
Mr. Hanlon.
Mr. Cronin, I wonder, when did you first realize that going out and under the plan that you have in mind meant? That you had to deal with a twenty-foot setback requirement that. You needed to use for your house.
I think we had some initial conversations with a contractor about it and there was, I think, some initial. Sort of belief that it would be treated as a side yard, but then once we found out that it was treated as a front yard, back to front yard on a dead end street. That we would that we would need to go through this process. And we felt like that the plan that we put together helps to. Maintain the house's look and feel. And increase the 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 curb appeal of the existing house.
If I, I mean, I I sort of agree with what that and with others have said, that when you when you look at the house. From the point of view of the money of the purposes of the bylaw, this is the best of the alternatives that you can readily see. Coming up would also present some problems, I think, with 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 some of the neighbors and with the general pattern here. But as I'm sure the chairman will shortly explain. There are very rigorous requirements in state law that are prerequisites for before we even get to this, to the point of what makes good sense. That we need to have in order to be able to grant. A variance and in particular, those need to come from either the soils or the topography or the shape of the lot. And Mr. Chair, maybe I had to just have you to start with this, but I'd like to have Mr. Cronin. Address that first criteria and make the best case he can for why it is that. That he satisfies it because that's kind of is the precondition for getting to everything else on what makes good sense.
Yeah, so I mean, primarily, most of the addition is going to be built over paved land and. It will allow us to move forward in in landscaping so that way we can. You know, better set up the the lawn to handle runoff and to to deal with. Those kinds of issues. And I I don't know if that helps to answer your question, but. Right now. The existing, the existing structure. Pours out onto the onto the driveway and then the driveway pours off into the street. And we would like to address that issue and. We're not. We're not covering a great deal of of green. Space within our lot and it'll allow us to to have more opportunity to. Move forward with landscaping and tree planting.
Thank you. So. As we had done on the prior hearing, so a special permit. There's a there's a series of findings the board needs to make in order to support a special permit. And there's some additional findings that are required for. The the large addition. However, variance is is very different than a special permit. Variance is, the. Terms for a variance are set under Mass General Law, Chapter forty-eight, Section ten. There are four essential tests that the board. Needs to needs to address and it needs to make a positive finding on all four tests. In order for it to be allowed to grant a variance. So those four tests, just to go through them first, is. That there must be a circumstance relating to. that there must be a circumstance relating to the soil condition, shape, or topography, especially affecting such land or structures, but not affecting generally the zoning district in which it is located that would substantiate the granting of a variance. Uh, the second is describe how a literal enforcement of the provisions of the zoning bylaw specifically relating to the circumstances affecting the land or structure noted above, which would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to the petitioner or applicant. The third is to describe how desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. And the last is to describe how desirable relief may be granted without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of the zoning bylaw of the town of Arlington, Massachusetts. So on that first uh, test, so what is it about the, what circumstances relating to the soil condition, the shape, or the topography, especially affecting this land and structure, but not generally affecting the zoning district in which it is located that would substantiate the granting of a variance?
Um, I think that the, I, I, I believe that we're not changing the, the land substantially from the existing space in terms of the, its, its um, impact on the topography. The, the, the ground will principally be left much the same. We're building over an existing porch structure. We're building over existing hardscape um, uh, for the vast majority of the addition.
But is, is there something specific about the soil conditions on your site that are different than every, than other houses in the district? Is there something about the shape of your lot that is different than other property in the zoning district? Or is there some, something about the topography of your site that is different than other properties in the district? Because if the board can't make that finding, we can't proceed with the rest of the variance application.
So the, so the shape of our, our lot is somewhat irregular. It, it, you know, it's not a rectangular lot. It, it has a curved front um, uh, corner there that um, to be quite frank, creates, you know, traffic issues in terms of the speed of cars coming around those, the corner. And then uh, it also is um, irregularly shaped in terms of the angles that it has along Gay Street relative to Washington Street.
Can I also note that the um, we sit right at the base of Turkey Hill, so there's a lot of runoff um, as my husband noted. So we get a ton of runoff that comes down from the hill uh, washing out into the street. Um, this addition would actually allow us to move the structure out slightly and redo the landscaping in such a way that we could level out that soil and help us address issues related to the runoff. Um, otherwise, it's just gonna continue to run straight. Right? We don't even have any grass growing in that space where the addition is going to be going now because it all washes out. Um, and so now we would have a structure and foundation there and we would be able to landscape in a way that would help reduce that runoff into the street.
So you see that it's runoff from Washington Street that is running?
No, we live on, no, down Turkey Hill, yeah.
Um, it runs off of like the street that is sort of parallel to Gay Street above us. Um, those houses are situated sort of above the, the wall and the, the water runs down along the sort of property lines and off into the um, our, our sort of side yard on Gay Street. Um, and it makes it impossible to put in, you know, grass or other, other, so we've, we've had to put in shrubs to help sort of protect the runoff situation and the grass has been totally eroded. And on Washington Street, it, there's whenever there's a large storm, it runs right down Washington and the street and it's eroding the yard and those kinds of things. But that's, I don't think principally what we're talking about here.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hanlon.
Yeah, maybe, I'm, I, maybe this is a little, I'm gonna try to focus on the way in which the, there's a reason why it is you need to, to go out to, towards Gay Street. And that has a lot to do with, I'm just going to not try to get it exactly right, but it has to do with the way in which the house is organized, that uh, the kitchen is in the wrong spot to build out in some other way. Uh, the bedrooms would be difficult for you to stay in the house if you build out in another way. And all of those things, when you take them together, are the hardship that would um, that would arguably justify a variance under the second of the criterion. So the first criterion is an arbitrary thing that the legislature put in fifty years ago uh, in order to prevent people like us from being too liberal and granting variances. And it said, it's okay if there's hardship in lots of reasons. The only ones we care about and we're going to let the the zoning boards care about are hardships that are caused by soil, shape, or topography. So to give you an example of what that might be, if suppose you were in a situation where um, you had to build, if you're going to build anywhere, you had to build within a setback because the rest of your lot was so steep that it was not buildable. That would be a hardship due to topography. And, and, and that still wouldn't count if the topography was common to other parcels in the area. It has to be relatively unique. Obviously, a similar thing would be happen if you had to move, build in a certain place to avoid wetlands. That would be where soils would come in. And the shape of the lot might come in as a sort of an arbitrary example. It might come up if a lot is so narrow that there isn't any ways to put in the house and still observe the setbacks. So what the legislature is asking us to do and asking you to do is to relate the hardship to the thing that, that is one of these first things. And I think that it's fair to say that the topography you have here is pretty much shared with much of what the neighbor is and that's not where you're coming from. And the soil conditions hardly matter because it's mostly already paved over. So the main thing that, that you've identified so far is the shape of the lot, which is somewhat irregular. Um, and I guess what I'd like you to do is to, is to articulate why it is the shape of the lot is the reason why it is you have the hardship that makes you want to move to move into the, to the front yard setback on the Gay Street side.
Okay, so I can, first I can actually clarify a, a point because now I, I think I understand the first condition a little bit better and I appreciate your, your guidance on that. The, if we, we cannot build out on essentially if you're facing the front of our house on Gay Street to the right, um, not only because it makes it challenging for us to remain in the home with uh, my daughter who's in public schools here in Arlington, but it would also, that the, there's a very steep sort of hill and existing trees that are there that would prevent us moving in that direction very far at all without completely inhibiting the ability to, to move around the house on that side. Um, that would also create, I think, a great deal more runoff that other, that other houses in our neighborhood do not have to wrestle with in that way. Because our house is facing sideways on the relatively steep hill where, with a very big embankment on the right side of our house such that if the, if, if, you know, the roof runoff was coming down from there and it was in greater size, it would increase the volume of water that would be pouring off the house on the far right-hand side, uphill side of our house and pouring down along the yard uh, in a fashion that would, would, would increase the, 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 the problems with the soil and runoff there. Um, and lastly, I think related to the point that you, you, you mentioned about this, the, the shape of our lot, we are situated sort of on this corner lot where our house is towards the backside of the lot where we do not have very big sort of backyard space that is private. Um, and any expansion on that side would, would probably unduly burden our neighbors a lot more than the expansion going this way. It would also take away any backyard functional that, that we have at this point in time, right? Um, and so this is the, sort of the, the best option and really the only option that would work for us.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mr. Cronin.
You're welcome.
Mr. Cronin, did you look at all into extending the house upwards?
We did, we did. And there's a couple of things that would really prevent us from doing that. First, you know, our daughter is uh, you know, in eighth grade and we wouldn't want to be moving out of the house for any substantial period of time. Um, and it would be just too big of a hardship to, to go through that sort of period of time in that way. The second is just that it would be uh, an increase in cost that would be really um, prohibitive for us. And the third is, is that we expect to be living in this home for the remainder of our lives. Our wife, my wife and I, we, we're you know, invested community members here in Arlington, great relationships with our neighbors, involved in activities. We expect to maintain that community engagement throughout our lives and we want to stay in a, in a, in a place that allows us to have one floor of ground-level living that we, that we can continue on.
What would the, the big, the area that you're creating or you're proposing to create on the gr- on the basement level um, on Gay Street? What is, what would that space be used for?
Mostly additional storage. Um, we have very little additional storage. We have a, a finished basement or partially finished basement. Um, and it's very hard to have uh, any other kinds of like, you know, sheds around our house given the, the way the layout is. And so this would allow us to have space to put bikes and other kinds of things that we, we currently struggle to sort of balance in our existing home.
Cause partly, partly my concern, so as the parking space, you know, eight and a half by eighteen, I'm a little concerned that the way that the parking space is shown on the plan right now, it is exactly eighteen feet from the edge of your property to the face of the wall. Um, and so unless you part, you know, so essentially you're gonna be parking partly on Gay Street, parking partly on your property, partly off your property. And if you park a, a second car next to it, that would only be exacerbated because it's getting, that dimension's getting narrower. So I was curious if you had looked into it all, into providing extending the parking under the proposed addition at all?
Um, I think we're, we're gonna keep the, the width of our current.
Right, but you're reducing the depth of the parking bar that you have now by eleven feet.
Yes. Um, and I don't, I don't know that, I, I don't um, see where that would be a problem. We would be able, we fit two cars in that space on a regular basis.
I'm not concerned about the width, I'm concerned about the depth.
Yeah, so the
The cars would not be on, the one car would fit on your property, but the other car would likely be partially parked on your property and partly parked off your property.
Well, we fit cars um, next to each other in that space and so they would not be partially
Again, I'm not worried about the side by side. I'm worried about the length of the car.
Yep.
Because you're moving where the front bumper can go, you're moving that point eleven feet closer to the street.
Yep.
So the back of the car is no longer on your property. The back of the car would potentially be off your property. And so I'm just trying to wrestle with that in terms of how
It would be, it would be still be within the driveway, but you mean it would be off of the
It would not be on your property.
Uh, okay. Um, well, that, it would not in any way create any situation with our, with a dead-end street that consists of you know, six neighbors, um, all of whom are, are in support of this this plan. Um, it doesn't inhibit the view uh, in terms of safety issues around kids playing in the streets and um, it wouldn't negatively impact anything about the look and feel of the neighborhood.
Okay.
We can currently park two cars next to each other, even if you move it all the way back and not be into the street, so.
Yeah.
Other, other questions from the board? This time I'm gonna go ahead and open this hearing for public comment. Um, I would again just note that public comment is taken as it relates to the matter at hand, should be directed to the board for the purpose of informing its decision. Members of public wish to speak can digitally raise their hand using the button on the reactions tab in the Zoom application. Those calling in by phone made out of star nine to indicate you'd like to speak will be called upon by the chair, asked to give your name and address for the record, and you'll be given time for questions and comments. So are there any members of public who wish to address um, this hearing, which is docket three, eight, zero, two, for two ninety-six, Washington Street? Uh, I see a hand raised. Um, so Patrick Harrigan? Harrington, excuse me.
Yes, thank you. Uh, this is Patrick Harrington. Uh, we live at eight Gay Street and uh, the Cronins and Farrell's are our neighbors. Uh, just wanted to say we fully support their plan. Um, and Shay made a very good point about the runoff. There is right now a situation where a fair amount of runoff water from the street that is parallel to Gay Street further up the hill really is coming down onto the street. And I think the plan that I've heard about should help uh, to prevent that.
Thank you very much. Um.
Not sure why I have a second person here with a hand up, but that's
I was gonna say, I'm looking at two places. Uh, there is a, another person identified as Shay Cronin, if they could go ahead and identify themselves and uh,
I don't know who that is.
Uh, sorry, this is uh, Michelle and Matthew Pomachi. We live at twelve Gay Street. We didn't update the link. Um, so sorry about that. Uh, we just wanted to say that we also were neighbors of Shay and Amy and we also fully support this um, uh, building plan.
Great, thank you so much. Appreciate that. Um, Tanya Hughes?
Uh, hi there, Tanya Hughes, eighty-seven Barnum Street. I was wondering, I can't tell from the things that I've looked at so far, so apologies if it's actually covered in the site plan. Um, is there a sidewalk on this lot? Um, and I was just wondering, uh, Mr. Klein, if your questions about the depth of the parking had to do with whether or not the end of the car would be overlapping onto the sidewalk, which I know that the applicant um, has assured us that the end of the car would not, would be remaining on his property. But if there's a sidewalk, you can't park on the sidewalk, right?
That is correct. So this
There is no sidewalk.
There are no sidewalks on either Washington or on Gay Street.
Okay, thank you.
You are very welcome. Are there any other members of public who wish to address this application? Being none, I will go ahead and close public comment for this hearing. Um, and so the board will deliberate and um, discuss whether to close the hearing or to continue the hearing. Um. So what the board has before it um, is a project that requires both special permits and a variance. Um, as we identified, the special permits that the board is required. Um, one is the large addition, um, because the addition is in excess of seven hundred fifty square feet outside the footprint of the existing house. Um, the second is that um, the relocation of the parking space um, would require a finding of the board that it is not substantially more detrimental, which is a special permit finding. And the third um, is that the front porch being uh, four feet in depth um, requires a special permit under four, three, nine, A. Um, and then in, that the, then in addition, uh, the board is required uh, would be required to find, to issue a variance. Um, and the variance would be for uh, a new non-conformity in regards to the front yard setback along Gay Street. Um, and I do not believe there is any other conditions that require a variance. So then the main, the main question before the board then is really um we can go through the the special permit findings, but I think it would be better for us if we were to uh review um, the criteria for the variance and see if the board feels that um the uh the can the circumstances um, that the board can make the requisite findings under this, under the uh the state bylaws, uh forty A, section ten. So the first criteria as you said, is the circumstances related to soil condition, shape or topography, especially affecting such land or structure, but not affecting generally the zoning district in which it's located that would substantiate the granting of a variance. And as the applicant has said, and I encourage him to correct me if I'm wrong, um as Mr. Hanlon has stated, there there really isn't anything about the soil conditions uh that are unique to the site. Uh, there's nothing particular about the topography um that is unusual for properties in this district. Uh, it really comes down to the question of the shape of the lot um and the location of the house on the lot itself. So I'm just gonna reshare the site plan. So as we can see here, that the shape, the lot is slightly trapezoidal. And it currently meets the rear yard setback, currently meets the side yard setback, currently meets the front yard setback on both streets. Um, it would really be this change here to the front that would require the variance um as was noted by the applicant. Uh, there are several large uh oak and maple trees. Um, they're served here on the boundary along Washington Street. Um, and then there are some additional uh large trees uh located here in the front yard. This applicant noted they they're unable to extend towards Washington Street because they're essentially tied up against the setback. Uh, they would only be able to add a couple of feet from this side. Um, while they do have the ability to add more off the back um before reaching the required setback, that would impact uh the existing trees that are in the back yard. While they could take more of an advantage of the the side yard here. They've opted not to do so because of the um, the proximity of the house on the adjacent property. And so uh they felt that the only place they had where they could really expand the house um is on the Gay Street side uh which because the zoning bylaw is considered a front yard with a twenty five foot setback. Um, and they would be requesting um not actually a full fifteen point five because it's actually to this corner here. So it's a slightly uh, so probably in the neighborhood of sixteen, sixteen and a half feet um to this corner is what the request is. Um but the question before the board, and I would ask a members of the board sort of what they feel. Do they find that there is something related to this house, this property that is not related to the district in general that would substantiate the granting of a variance?
Uh, Mr. Chair?
Mr. LeBlanc?
I have a little bit of trouble with this one. Um mostly because if you look at their adjacent neighbor on Washington Street, it's a pretty similar lot shape and um dwelling location to this property. So when we have to compare it to other properties in the zoning districts, I think there's a comparable one right next to it that makes it difficult to come to a a finding on that one.
May I, may I speak to that issue?
Mr. Chairman? Yep.
Um, yeah, so if you're uh if you're referring to the house that is uh up Washington to our right, that house also has a garage structure that is on the side of the house that would effectively make it the the width of our house plus the addition. And that house is also on a much leveller plot. And ours is on a much more slanting plot coming down the hill. He's effectively at the top of the hill where it's leveled out, and then there's a steep embankment, and then our house is graded down along Washington Street. Um, and so our our lot really is unique compared to our immediate neighbors in that we are facing uh Washington Street and the grade is sideways across our house. And it is nowhere sort of particularly level. Um, except for on you know, just in that that small backyard area where we have the the wall that we constructed. So Mr. Chairman, in the summary, when you mentioned the three things, the soil condition, the shape and the talk topography earlier in addressing Mr. Hanlon's questions, I made the case that it's both the shape and the topography, not just, not just the shape.
Well, thank you for that correction. I appreciate that.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Hanlon?
If I could ask, Mr. Cronin, let's imagine that you had the same the same need to provide additional space. And you squared off this property so it would be square. And it was flat. But you still don't want to go up because it's too expensive. You still don't want to go out to what we are thinking of as the side yard, but which you probably usually think of as your backyard. Um, because that takes away your backyard and also makes you too close to the neighboring property. What I wonder is of the reasons why it is that you really want this design and don't want any alternative, how it would be different if this lot were flat and square?
How it would be different if this lot was flat?
What consideration would be different? And I'm focusing now on your actual reasons for wanting to to do it this way rather than go up or rather to go in a different direction?
It would allow us to expand our living space. We we currently have a very small dining room space that cannot fit any additional people other than four people to sit at a table um in a very small living room space. And it's very hard to have sort of any other folks join us in that space.
But how would, how would a square lot change that?
Can it? So if it was flat and square, Mr. Hanlon?
If the lot was flat and square, how would it?
If the lot was flat and square, we could actually go back. We could build in the backyard. We could build back where the the bedrooms are. We cannot do that. There's these huge trees and there's a very steep grade, right? So our property
We should also emphasize that there's the large arboretum, arboretum, uh, arbividae in the back in the what we what is it, our side yard, which means that if we were to push back towards the property line, we would be affecting those trees as well. And I mean, and they're over thirty feet tall.
So the the structure of that that back grade, um although our property line goes further back, we functionally can't build anything on that grade because the grade is going up to that house that's on our right, that's the our next door neighbor that has a, as my husband said, flat lot. Uh, that, you know, he can utilize the full lot, whereas we can really only utilize the lot where we're not on that steep grade. So the front is really the only place to go at this point in time.
May I interrupt?
Uh, Mr. Carrera, you're, I believe you are the contractor. Is that correct?
I am, yes. I just been sitting here listening. So um so I looked at all all the scenarios that I could think of for the remodel of this house for the needs that they are looking for. And of course, number one costs, right? And because we, my first proposal was just go up with it. You know, don't deal with what what you need to go through like we are right now. But it it they actually they like they have stated, they want to stay on this house. They want to retire here and and raise the kids here and all that stuff and and they they great kids and so on. So mu- to to keep the house as laid out the way it is without touching the bedrooms and the bathrooms that's on the right side of the house, this is the most cost effective way because on the other side, the grade comes up so high that we're gonna have issues with termites trying to dealing with slabs and all that stuff. So it wouldn't work there. And like they have mentioned, there's a lot of trees that they don't want to give up because it gives them a lot of privacy. If you have, if you've seen it, they actually have done a beautiful job with their backyard. And just be ashamed to just get rid of all that. So m- my proposal to them is to go for the special permit and the variance on this side because I felt like this is would be would work the best for them in this lot without compromising three quarters of the house and just adding on to this side so that they can get their kitchen space, their entertainment space, their outdoor space. And without, you know, obviously it also always comes down to costs as well, then trying to keep them within the budget. So the proposal is what I said to them that I thought was worth going for. As you guys have seen, some of the houses that we have done that we brought from some of these uh special permits and variances that I think will work really good for them, especially for a lot of the neighbors in the neighborhood that I've done a lot of work for. And talk to them that, of course, they don't want to lose them because they want to stay there. And and so the proposal really came down to me working with the surveyor and working on board of my architect to come up with a plan that fit within their budget that were accommodate all their needs and without touching their bedrooms that they're completely happy with, the bathroom that they have, they're completely happy with, and gives them all that entertainment space and all that living space that they can enjoy. So that's why this proposal is brought upon you guys the way it is because for those reasons, and that's why, you know, I just can't see how the lot would work unless, of course, you knock the house down and start it all over again, which is not something they want to do. So then this is why it's proposed this way. I just wanted to put my two cents in for that.
Well, thank you for that.
Thank you. And I'm here if you need to ask me other questions.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Dupont?
So I was just on Google Maps, and so I think if you look at it from uh literally a bird's eye view, you'll see that many lots in the area are not rectangular. So to me, the lot shape part of the basis for arguing a variance um doesn't fit. It it, you know, I just don't think it's that unique. I mean, I think when we think about lot shape, we're thinking about something as Mr. Hanlon had said is extremely narrow or perhaps triangular or what have you. So for the variance, so we don't think it's soil condition, I don't think. Um, and I think Mr. Cronin has said topography. And and I think that you know, I'm not convinced one way or the other that that argument is sufficient. Um, only because I think that it's sort of the first time we're hearing about it and I I'm not um, I'm not blaming Mr. Cronin for that. I think that, you know, variances, I think, are hard for us to understand at times and interpret. And so I think that, you know, people coming into this, it's sort of um obscure obscure when you're thinking about, well, what does it mean and how do you approach it? So on on the one hand, I I think I understand from what both, you know, Mr. Cronin and Ms. Farrell, I believe it is um have said about, you know, the slope of the land. But I'm not sure to what extent that actually would prohibit you from doing the building. And I I think again, as Mr. Hanlon had said, you know, the second part of this, which is the hardship seems pretty clear to me too. I mean, you know, the way that the house is situated on the lot and the way the rooms are configured and you know, using it very differently might actually not be workable, but for me, I would want to know more about the um topography part of things in terms of measurements and, you know, whatever else can be added to make that argument stronger. Because at the moment, I don't feel like I have enough information um to make a decision. And so I don't know whether there's a way of supplying that information. I realize we're having a discussion. But I don't know if there are some more details, you know, that could be provided um for us perhaps to hear more at another meeting. But right now, again, I I don't know enough or have enough information to make a decision.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Hanlon?
It seems to me that probably the very best way to get a judgment on this is to see it for ourselves. And I was wondering if we, if the applicant were agreeable, if we could do a continuance in between now and July ninth, uh organize a site visit so we can actually see what they're talking about and and you know, not infer from drawings and 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 contours and whatever, but just see what the problem is. That may be the best way for us to to actually get it on our heads and feel more comfortable making the making the the judgment that we're called upon to make. I must say that I feel a little bit like Mr. Dupont. Obviously, the topography, if you just mean the general slope up and down Washington Street is common to every property on Washington Street, but particular problem in the backyard that arguably makes it impo- well, we're now calling the the side yard that makes it difficult to to use that alternative uh is something that I I think the best way we could the best way we could inform ourselves would be if we saw it for ourselves.
So I I appreciate the suggestion and I welcome uh the the board to to come out and look at it. I would also like to just add relative to um what Mr. Dupont mentioned is that I do believe we provided um topographical drawings to about the as part of the plot plan. There was an additional piece of the information that we submitted. I'm not mistaken?
Don't see it in the record.
So we could do that if if needed, or I mean, I do actually agree that I think it's really helpful if you actually see it uh because it's a pretty significant slope up in the back and we would definitely welcome that opportunity to
Okay.
show members of the committee.
All right. So um with that, I would ask if if you could um submit the the site plan that includes the contours, does that also include the trees too? Now, do you know?
We can provide that.
Um I think that would be very helpful if we could have uh that in our record. And then I will ask um
You you like a tree plan?
Yeah, if you haven't, yeah, we just
Oh, yeah.
Because there's so much of what we're discussing has to do with the the location of those existing trees. I think it would be important to have that in the record.
Do you want us to shoot to also provide you with grades from the highest point to the lowest point?
Um
So you can see what a runoff is like?
Yeah, so I, Mr. Cronin had mentioned that there was a or uh his wife had mentioned that there was a uh a plot plan that had contours on it. And so I think that would be helpful because the plot plan, the only plot plan we have just has the the outlines of the existing and proposed. It doesn't have trees and it doesn't have contours.
Yeah, I could do, I can do a site plan and just show you all the trees and everything else on it.
Okay.
So you can see all the grades and how they how great it, how dramatically it changes from one end of the house to the other. Sure.
All right. And then
Very easy to do.
Okay. And then um I would just ask Ms. Ralston tomorrow, we can uh work on trying to schedule uh with the applicant for a time when the the board can visit. Um and if the board goes at the same time, we have to advertise it. So uh we just have to take, make sure we we do that properly for for public meetings. Um
Could we just do the two by two?
We could do two by two as well.
No is arc uh
Yeah.
sort of thing.
Absolutely.
I I think it would be, I mean, I just encourage us maybe to we've, we've done this before when when it's advertised, it's only a couple of days, as I recall, that's We've, we've done this before when, when it's advertised, it's only a couple of days, as I recall, that's when we last.
It's forty eight hours.
And. I think it would be helpful for it to have us go out and have uh. Uh, Mister Cronin and Mister Farrell um. Show us what they mean and, and you know, just explain it to us. And do it under circumstances where we all sort of see the same thing. Or at least everybody who can make the meetings. So I'd encourage us not to do it two by two. We don't really have to. We just have to make sure that we don't discuss it while we're there. Um, but as long as we know how to keep our lips zipped, we ought to be able to see the same thing and see. And, and let Mister Cronin point out what it is we ought to look at, which we won't necessarily see if we just. If we just go by or you know, maybe Mister Carrera will be doing that, but. But somebody ought to be in a position of just showing what it mean. And I think that Mister Cronin has, has done a really good job, as has Miss Farrell about explaining it.
And I, I will be there with them as well.
Perfect.
Yeah, and I'll provide you with the plan with, with the tree plan and all that, so you can see all that. I can, I can get that done in a couple of days.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Mister Chair, may I make a request? If, if the, if the contractor is um, gonna be there for that um, site meeting. It would be really helpful. It has been helpful in the past. If you could just like put a stake where you think the, you know, new corner of. The addition would be uh, or just generally so that we could understand. Uh, that especially with these corner lots. Um, you know, that, that double set pack. Uh, partly has to do with being able to see from a, from a vehicular standpoint across the corner. So it's really helpful for us to know, um, you know, how close the, the edge of the building is going to be.
Yeah, I'll stake it all out and show you how high it will come up and all that, so you can. See what the view would be like coming around the corner and all that, because you know, we're very sensitive to that too, because. We all know there's a lot of places in Arlington that are so tough to drive around, because you know, if somebody grows a big tree on there or whatever, but. Yeah, I'll stake it all out for you. No problem.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Riccadelli. So with that, um. The Chair will accept a motion to continue the public hearing for docket uh, three eight zero two. Two ninety six Washington Street until Tuesday. July nine at seven thirty P M.
Still moving, Mister Chairman.
Thank you, Mister Hanlon. Motion, Mister Hanlon, seconded by Mister Dupont. And a vote of the board, um, Mister Dupont.
Aye.
Mister Hanlon.
Aye.
Mister Riccadelli.
Aye.
Miss Hoffman.
Aye.
Mister LeBlanc.
Aye.
Yeah, the Chair vote. Alright, so we are continued on two ninety six Washington Street. Thank you all for. Being with us this evening and uh, we will be in contact about a site visit.
Alright, thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Uh, so with that, going back to our agenda, the next item is docket three eight zero three forty Sutherland Road. So if I could go ahead and ask the applicants to go ahead and introduce themselves. And tell us what they are proposing and I will go and find the drawings. The applicant.
I believe he's on mute.
Oh, the Mister Popular Mutazon. You can, yes.
Sorry about that. So today we're trying to find and what the board on this, taking for the capacity. I live on forty seven in here and in the height.
I would note that it's very hard to hear you, sir. Uh, it's a little bit, it's a sort of a hum or a hiss or something in the background. I'm not sure what that is.
Yeah, let me see.
Ow.
Oh, that's much better.
Yeah, it's my, my AirPods. Sorry about that. Um, so you're gonna get a close up now, because I, so I can hear you. Okay, so thank you again. Um, I live on forty Sutherland Road, I'm a family of four. Two teenage children, seventeen years old. And my wife and I, and we have a single driveway. That we'd like to extend to when you're looking at the front of the house to the left. Um, to put another parking spot there. So that we can accommodate another car. We've had one car since we've been here for seven years. And now that the kids want to drive, we need another parking spot because on the road, you cannot park on the street overnight. Um, and so. It's a really difficult situation. We've been doing it, taking mass transit for seven years. I work in South Boston. So we'd really, you know, it came, it's come to the point where we need to, to have a second driveway. And um. We've, we did the proposal with Colleen. She's been very helpful. And uh. That's what we're asking, so.
Thank you. So this is the plot of the land and this is the existing. Uh, parking space that they have.
Correct.
So what, what, what's not, well, excuse me, clear from the drawing. Um, just past the end of the parking space is a significant drop off.
Yes.
And there's from the, the edge of the driveway here is about a, almost a foot off the land. And the land slopes away and then there's a retaining wall and then there's a. A significant drop before it gets to the house. Um, so there's a, a large amount of topography in this area. Um, which precludes extending the driveway back at all. And the lot is incredibly small. Uh, so this is the, this is the existing condition and then this is the proposed condition. So I think if I'm correct, the, the reason that this is sort of shown in this curved fashion because, is because that's the. Uh, the location of the existing retaining wall, is that correct?
That is the, that, that, that shows the existing retaining wall in the back of the driveway and that would be the new retaining wall. Curving to the, on the left hand side and then coming up and then finally just going into the ground and meeting the, the road, or the sidewalk.
Okay. So existing condition, so we're not making, the proposal is not to make it any deeper, it's just to, to widen it to allow uh, for a second vehicle.
Correct.
Park on it, okay.
We would be using permeable pavers, not asphalt.
Yeah. Yeah, it is, I believe it's brick masonry today, is that correct?
Uh, yes, it is. That would be removed and then we um. Put down with permeable block, uh, squares or rectangles, whatever we choose.
Okay. Is there any kind of? Like curb or bumper or something at the end of the driveway?
Yeah, there's a. Sorry, go ahead.
I was just gonna say from, for me personally, if I was trying to teach my kids to drive, it would scare the dickens out of me.
Um, yeah, there's a slight dip when, when you go, go there. Um, it's, it's not great, it's not big, but it's, it's a slight dip from the height, then you go down. Maybe, I don't know how high it is, a foot maybe. But it, it goes over a span of maybe, I'd have to measure. Um, the width of a sidewalk plus, so. It, it drops down.
Okay.
We could, we could, we would make that as smooth as possible to keep the sidewalk straight and, and match it as best.
Are there questions from the board?
Mister Chair.
Mister LeBlanc.
Um, there's another drawing that we shared as part of the record that has a little bit more dimension on it. And I was just a little unsure if we, if. You could actually fit two cars on the. Drawing that was provided. Um, just seems like there's not enough, enough depth. Uh, in the new, yeah, this, this drawing here. That there's not enough depth, um, once you start to get to. Um, this kind of area that's shaded in that red pink. That, that's kind of where a car would be, given some, some of these dimensions.
Yes, so we, we've thought about that and so that may not be the best accurate drawing. I think it's better on the, on the, on the um, plot plan. But we would have to, it would be limited. You couldn't put like a huge SUV there. We'd have to have a smaller car. And that would be, that would be, that's what we plan on doing. We're limited by what there.
And you're working to maintain a walking path between where the driveway would be and the house.
Yes, we would be building steps going down the incline.
Okay.
That would be project. There's, there's now, there's, there's steps there now, there's like. Go ahead.
Okay. I was just gonna say, does it, is there any advantage to squaring this off? And doing stairs off the back of the driveway to allow you to. Have this additional space for, for your driveway.
It's quite the drop, it's about.
Or is that just overly complicated?
It's about a seven foot drop and that would take a lot of space out of there, because we want to have a, a living area down there, like with a little patio and a, and a table. Where it's a very, very small lot, unfortunately.
No. Yeah, it's a two thousand square foot lot. It's tiny.
Yeah, it's a postage stamp. I don't have, mine alone is great though. But it is a unique situation and the houses, the, the three houses that are here are all like that, right? So it's very difficult. Um, situation. Um. So we'd like to improve it. It, it would, it would, uh, we would do it tastefully done. It would be done well. Um. And. It would serve the benefit of. Available two cars and also would be convenient, you know, if we were ever to sell the place. People would have enjoyed that also, right? So it would increase the value.
Quickly share the. This is from the town's prop, uh, land viewer. So this is just showing the. It's these four houses here along Sutherland that have these very tiny. Yard depths.
Yes.
That topography here doesn't really help, but. Um. Let's go ahead and stop the share. Are there any other questions or comments from the members of the board?
Uh, Mister Chair, just one question.
Yes, Mister Riccadelli.
Um, so, so I just want to understand, uh, so I think the new width. Proposed is eighteen feet. It looks like the original width is about eleven six from the, from the first plot plan. So um, the intent is to extend that curb cut. Uh, whatever, six and a half feet. That additional six and a half feet, it looked like from looking at the pictures. That the, the curb cut right now is shared with the, the neighbor as well. Um, you guys have kind of side by side.
Yes.
Driveways. Okay. So now it will be sort of like a three wide curb cut off of that, um, off of Suther, Sutherland Street, right?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you, Mister Chair.
Oh, you're welcome. Um, I can share that as well. So this does show that condition. Um. To the, the corner house, this is the existing driveway, uh, which would be extended in width here. Um. This front yard tree, it's not a street tree, uh, so it is not. Um. A town tree, it's a private tree.
Yes.
Which made, which. Um, is there any possibility that tree could be relocated? Is it fairly recent?
We're working on, we're, we're, that's part of the, um, quotes we're getting is to move it in the back or. People are very interested in it because it's a cherry tree in my. It's, uh, we'll see if we'll keep it or not. We're trying to, we'll see. Um.
Mister Chairman.
We, I mean, is, we'd like to maybe push it a little bit further over to give us a little more width, maybe if we could. Like maybe angle it a little bit, but I don't know if my, my, if that is aesthetically pleasing for my wife or not, to tell you the truth.
Yeah, you're just, you're limited to twenty feet, so.
Okay.
Whatever that comes out to.
So we have eighteen, right? So.
You're requesting, you have eleven point six, you're requesting eighteen.
So we could go out to twenty is what you're saying?
So the, by the bylaw, it has to be, it can be no wider than twenty.
Okay. That I didn't know. Thank you. Um, but then the distance between the driveway and the house is my concern.
Correct, yeah, because that's already. At eighteen feet, that's already quite tight. And basically you'd be creating more. Sort of the, you know, the wedge that's not deep enough to actually park in. You're probably better off keeping the eighteen.
Right.
Mister Chairman.
Mister Dupont.
So I, I just, I actually had gotten the Google image um, before, which is similar to what you're showing and. I just wanted to understand the distance from the edge of what the pavers are that exist today to the house. Because I know they're going from eleven six to the eighteen and. Um, I, I assume that that means that there's going to be. Um, you know, there's going to have to be some sort of retaining. Uh, structure built to hold that. You need to keep it level. And um, is the, is the end of the driveway in toward the house? Once you extend that over to the eighteen feet, how close to the house does that actually come? Because I can't tell from the drawing.
It's three feet.
Three feet, and so, okay, so there would be a walkway essentially or some space to maneuver through?
Yes, and, and we're actually thinking about redoing the entire wall. To be transparent because it is leaning back a little bit. And if we're gonna put more weight on there, we would do it with uh, with uh, the concrete block. So that the whole wall would be done, it wouldn't be additional on that wall, because I don't think that's strong enough for me, but. Um, it could be done, but I, we, we would probably replace the whole wall.
And so what would happen to that big tree at the end?
In the back?
Yeah.
That's already gone because that was interfering with our uh. Basically, it was, it was sick and would, if we, that's not the car we have anymore. We have a different car now and branches were falling on the car and denting it. And there's, so we, we, that has been removed.
Yeah. Yeah, these images are nine months old.
That was removed and marked. By northeastern tree.
Alright, thank you.
It's unfortunate, but we had to do it because it gave us great shade. It's, we, but it was a necessary thing, unfortunately.
It's stopped.
Every time we had a storm, because the, a branch already did before we bought the house. Snapped off and hit the house. We could see where they did it and so I was just, it's. Much.
Uh, so with that, um, are there any other questions from the board before I open for a public comment? No, I'm gonna go ahead and open this hearing for a public comment or mind. Uh, our attendees, that questions or comments are taken as they relate to the matter at hand. It should be directed to the board for the purpose of informing its decision. Uh, members of public who wish to speak can digitally raise their hand using the button on the reactions tab in the Zoom application. If you're calling it by phone, you may dial star nine. Um, you'd be called upon by the Chair, asked to give your name and address for the record and given time for questions and comments. Uh, so with that, uh, the first hand up is John Hayes.
Uh, this is actually Rachel Hayes at twenty four Argyle Road. Uh, we are right behind Sutherland Street and are well familiar with this challenge of growing families. Uh, we support this request. Uh, there are many variations on the theme that we've all been through. And think that this is a reasonable approach to solving the, uh, the family's problem. Thanks for your time.
Thank you so much for being with us.
Thank you.
Uh, next, Mister Steve Moore.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mister, uh, Mister Chair, Steve Moore, Piedmont Street. I, um. I'm very disheartened to hear that that large tree was taken. Um, I understand that it sounds like it was kind of a complicated situation. Uh, with that tree not there, though, does that not therefore open up your possibilities for. Uh, lengthening as opposed to widening the driveway?
Um, that drop off from the, from the. Road from the edge of the driveway from the um, is about seven feet straight down. Um, so. And so you'd have to fill in and build a retaining wall, it would, it would. Be s- very expensive, and I don't know how. It would look, to tell you the truth, because you'd have to have a retaining wall all the way down, and we'd have no yard at that point.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, that, that, that makes sense, I guess, I think I, you did comment about how it was a significant drop off for seven feet is is significant. And uh, I, I guess perhaps the uh, nice looking cherry tree could go where the old tree has been removed. Uh, but I am, uh, the idea of that, that driveway at that height being that close to your house. I think would give you significant pause. Just because unless you put some sort of ability to retain a car there, not have it drive right into your house by mistake. That's, it's, it's, it's elevated and you're halfway up the. Height of your dining room or, or living room or whatever's behind that big window there. I just, I don't know, that just represents concern to me, but anyway, it's not my call, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Are there any other members of public who wish to address this hearing? Seeing none, I will go ahead and close public comment for this hearing. So what the board has before it, uh, so this is a special permit request. It's uh, let's hear, uh, under sec six one ten A. But what it really is, as far as the board is concerned, it is a. It's an existing non-conforming front yard parking space that is being requested to be enlarged. And under uh, section eight in our bylaw, the board is allowed to extend an existing non-conformity. Uh, with a determination that it is not. Consistent, is not considerably more detrimental than the existing condition. Um, so the, the existing condition, it's a single car, it's a, almost a car and a third wide parking space. Uh, they would be adding fifty percent to the width of their existing driveway. Um, in the front yard, which would require uh. The relocation hopefully, or the removal of a tree in their front yard. Uh, and the creation of a retaining wall to uh, hold the um. The parking, as was noted by the applicant, the intent is to have um permeable. A permeable surface for the parking. Um, and the, the intent is solely to allow for uh, the provision of a second vehicle in their driveway. I would just note for the applicant, um, any retaining wall greater than four feet in height does need to be. Engineered and issued a building permit by the, uh, by the building department, so um, I just mentioned that uh, to you. Are there any other questions for the board about what is being requested? Uh, so in the board's evaluation of um, whether or not.
Hey, Mr. Chair, can I ask a question on that?
Yep, go right ahead.
So, um. If the, if the existing wall is already there and we replace it, do we need an engineering diagram for that? Or just where it's not existing in the new wall?
For that, I would have to refer you to the building department.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, absolutely. So the, in order to make the determination um. That the extension or alteration uh should not be substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming structure. Uh, the board typically reviews the required findings for a special permit. So those would be that the adverse effects of the proposed use will not outweigh its beneficial impacts. Um, the beneficial impact is that it will allow the applicant uh, to. Um, accommodate their expanding family and to uh, have an additional provision of transportation for the family. Um, and they're proposing to do it in a way that doesn't uh significantly impact their neighbors or their neighbors' enjoyment of their properties. Uh, the requested use is allowed or allowed by special permit in the district. Um, this isn't a, a non-conforming use, uh, excuse me, a non-conforming um. Uh, structure, and as such, it is allowed to be extended uh. With a determination that it is not substantially more detrimental, uh, the requested use is essential or desirable to public convenience or welfare. It is uh desirable to allow um, the inhabitants of the town to use their uh. Use their property in a way that meets the needs of their families. I think we're all well aware that uh, once there are uh, children of driving age in the family, multiple cars are sometimes a necessity. Um, and this will accommodate that for this uh homeowner. Uh, will not create undue traffic congestion or impair pedestrian safety, um, this will not. Impact any current sightlines uh, to the sidewalk um, or to the street. Um, it will create a wide uh curb cut, um, because it is. Joining with the curb cut on the adjacent property. But each individual curb cut um. Does not create an undue uh, s- safety hazard. Uh, will not overload any public system, as was noted by the applicant, they're planning to do pervious paving. Uh, so runoff will not be an issue onto Sutherland Road. And uh, the special reg uh, when. Excuse me, the special regulation for the requested use is fulfilled, that is the. Uh, under section eight, it is a requirement for uh, finding it's not substantially more detrimental. Uh, requested use will not impair the character or integrity of the district, um, there are. Uh, many houses in this area that have uh. Parking uh, close to the street, especially on this section of Sutherland Road, where the depth of the properties is only, is limited, excuse me, to uh, forty-five feet. Um, the request will not be detrimental to public health or welfare. Um, having the additional parking space should not have any particular impact on public health or welfare. And the requested use will not cause an excess of use detrimental to the neighborhood. Um, again, this is a single family use with accessory parking, and that is um, intended use of the district. Are there any questions from the board in relation to um. The findings that I have uh, just put forward. Seeing none, um. For applications before the board, the board typically uh, includes the three standard conditions, which were read. Prior into the record, are there any additional special permit conditions that the board would recommend for this application?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hanlon.
I suggest that we include a condition about the, just incorporating the intent that Mr. Popil has expressed about the permeable paving. We're relying on it, and it would be useful to include that as a condition rather than just a representation at the hearing.
Okay. Agreed, and I would also include um. A condition that the applicant prepare a certified plot plan for submittal to the registry of deeds.
Can you expl- ex- explain what that means, please, or?
So um, what the board is approving is essentially, it's a, in, a non-conforming. Uh, structure on the property, uh, that, and that will transfer with the land as it goes forward. And so a part of the application process, once the board has issued um. A special permit, the, that special permit needs to be filed with the registry of deeds. So that it becomes a permanent record for the property, because otherwise somebody in the future could say, you, you'll be like, why is this here? And you can't find a record of it.
Right, right.
It's just, it's a, it's a required step um, at the very end of the application process.
And who would take care of that?
Uh, so that would be yourself, uh, but the zone, the um, I'm sure inspection services could let you know what's required.
Okay, it's called special services?
In- inspectional services, so the building department.
Inspection services, okay. Thank you, that's a good, good, great idea. Update the deed.
So unless, it's so the, what the board has um, for this site, it's a request for a special permit. And a section uh, six finding of not substantially more detrimental in regard to the increasing the width of the driveway. Um, there's a re- recommendation for three uh, standard conditions plus two additional conditions, one regarding permeable paving. And the other regarding the, the plot plan for the registry of deeds. Um, are there any concerns from the board in regards to uh, this application? Seeing none, the chair will take a motion to close the public hearing for docket three eight zero three forty Sutherland Road.
Mr. Mr. Chairman, so move, but before we go to a second, I just want to make it clear that the uh, I'll end up. Expect to prepare the decision here, and as was true with the earlier case. My, it is my intention to prepare a decision approving this application with the conditions that. Uh, that the chairman has read into the record.
Thank you, Mr. Dupont. So roll call vote of the board to uh, close the public hearing for docket three eight zero three, number forty, Sutherland Road, Mr. Dupont.
Hi.
Mr. Hanlon.
Hi.
Mr. Rick Adeli.
Hi.
Ms. Hoffman.
Hi.
Mr. LeBlanc. And the chair votes, uh, we are closed on forty Sutherland Road, thank you very much.
All right, thank you, everyone, appreciate it.
Thank you, you too. Um, then going back to our agenda, this brings us up to item number six. On our docket three eight zero four, three twenty-two Mystic Street. Um, I can go ahead and ask the applicant to introduce themselves and tell us what they would like to do, and I will. Go ahead and uh, bring up the site plan. Oh, you're on mute, sorry.
Hello, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening, uh, my name is Ravindra, um, and I recently purchased this property through HUD. And we are uh, renovating the house. Um, everything else is fine, it's just a driveway, uh, probably everyone knows what the situation is there. Every time you, uh, it's a really short and a uh, very steep driveway. And uh, uh Mystic uh, Street is really like a, a very high volume traffic. And there's no parking on the street, so every time you try to pull into the driveway. It's a life or death situation there, because you know, um, as soon as you turn in. Then you have, because the drive is so short, that you really have to like a, uh, like a, a. Very abruptly stop, and also every time you try to uh, back up. Uh, to like a get out, uh, you have to really uh, like a uh, see what's coming. Because they are traveling in a very high speed, so basically it's like a, um, you know, uh, safety hazard issue. And uh, you know, there is not much uh, we can do, uh, because it's, it's a lot of ledge there. And also, um, the driveway is very steep, like uh, uh, so. Well, you know, we are requesting that on the side of the house. Um, we uh, that driveway to continue, so that at least we have some kind of a leeway there. Um, uh, basically to park the car or even just to like a turnaround or do something. Any, anything wider than what we have there is going to give us a good like a visual of the street also. And. Yeah, that's what we are looking for.
Okay, um. So the, the reason that this application is before us, uh, so this is listed as a variance under six one ten A. Uh, so the width of a driveway is limited to twenty feet and um. Obviously, the width here would be significantly wider than twenty feet, so that's the, that's the reason that this application is before the board. So I had, uh, so you had noted in your application that you were concerned about the safety of coming in and out on Mystic Street. Um, I did contact uh, the police department and asked for records of um. Any accidents on this stretch of Mystic Street, uh, they had responded that there were two. Two accidents reported on the, on Mystic Street over the la- course of the last three years that involved um. Uh, driver falling asleep and hitting a telephone pole, and there was a third where uh. Driver struck a telephone pole after avoiding an animal. Uh, but there have been no reported accidents in regards to um, entering or exiting any of the properties on Mystic Street. So I just wanted to um, provide that information for the board. Could you explain how the proposed drive going up the side of the house is going to improve the safety condition?
It will, like I said, it will, on the side of the uh, house where there is a lot of bushes and stuff. Uh, that we can just clear out a little bit and have a retaining wall. Uh, which will give us like a better um, be a visual on the road while backing up. And uh, when you, when you said that there, there hasn't been much accident, that's probably because most of the houses there, there. Either they already have wider driveway, like they did the pavers on the side, or they did a wider carpets. Or most of them have like a horse to a driveway there. Which, which is like significantly, they can turn around, and this particular house, if you even go. Just for me to go there, I really have to remember where the house is and turn the side light on from like two. Three hundred um, feet before, and also I uh, still I get tailgated, like almost feels like when the time to turn inside. Uh, feels like uh, somebody's gonna hit me every time, and uh, when you get out from there, it's, it's uh, worse situation. Because then you don't see anything, so um, yeah, this is something like, just because it's so steep there. So I'm sorry, maybe I, I um, forgot what was your original question?
No, no, I think that, that's response to the question, so there's. Um, an existing two-car garage under the house, is that remaining?
That's not two-car garage, what happened was, probably at some point was, but then. Uh, because the house is sitting on the uh, ledge, so they had to do some kind of a bench walls. So uh, all around the perimeter of the garage, so it became narrow and ne- narrower, so we, when we got there. We had to do some too, because we uh, the um, to protect the foundation. So it's, it's like uh, the door is going to be sixteen feet, but inside is, is much smaller. So one car will fit there barely.
Oh, okay. But you're not removing the driveway, I mean, sorry, the, the, whatever parking is there in the garage.
No, um, that's going to stay.
But, I had, when I visited the site, I noted you had um, sort of cleared it off on the side to put the construction dumpster in. Was that beforehand, was that area landscaped to the side of the driveway?
It was in a really, really uh, rough uh, situation there, um, there was no grass. There was a one tree, there's very small, like I think it was a Japanese maple tree. But it was uh, not really in a good condition, no one had taken care of the property, basically. So when we got there, uh, to do the kind of construction work, like uh, you know, uh. We had to put dumpster somewhere, so I figured maybe if we do that. Uh, then we can have a little bit of space, uh, workable space there, and uh, we can uh, uh. Pull over like a, one or two cars. Pull over like a one or two cars, uh construction vehicles, so that we are not obstructing the street. Uh we try to just uh um uh be a little bit uh safer uh than uh, you know, uh. Taking chances. So, yes.
So would you be, so at the front of the property, there's an existing retaining wall that's like three feet high. Along the sidewalk that turns into the driveway is. I, I, I'm having trouble just from the site plan, the way it's, it's drawn, is the intention to remove it?
That has been removed already.
Okay.
Yeah, that turn, otherwise the dumpster couldn't go inside, so.
And so is the id- so would it be, so the curved red line here? Is the land sort of in that triangular wedge, is that higher than the?
Yeah, it's, it's a little higher there, that's the only corner. Actually, to tell you the truth, if, if I can have like maybe six foot of a curb. Remove from there, that will make sense more. But then, uh you know, I didn't know uh how much should I ask for. So I, I was very hesitant to say, so I said, okay, maybe uh we'll keep that uh curb a- as it is. And we'll just turn the car, uh you know, have, have that space make a little wider. So I, I just didn't want it to uh overwhelm asking for something, you know, I just wanted to do after like. I'm allowed, so I mean, uh you know, if that curb can be removed, that would be really good.
Okay. And then you're saying that the, the garage space itself, is it, is it that it's not deep enough to be parking or?
No, the width wise, the, yeah, it was, it from before was like a just uh door was sixteen footer. But uh when you have a sixteen-foot door, you should have like a foot or two on the side, so that when you open the door, you have a space. So if it is exactly sixteen, then uh it's not really, you can't fit a two car. But then uh we had to put uh build more bench walls to protect the foundations, so. Um that was uh, we discussed with the building department and they uh, you know, the, the structural engineers said like, if you do like this. Then uh your building is going to be uh protected better, so we had to do like eight-inch wall all around the perimeter. So now it's uh more small.
Oh, okay. So I was going to quickly, so this is the, the street view in Google, so you're, so. Where the concrete is here below the brick, you're saying there's now, this comes out eight inches in order to. Trust the buttress of foundation wall?
Yes.
Okay. Um and then that's the garage.
Mister Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Hanlon?
Uh it's a question that I was going to ask in a minute, but I, but I really want to do it while this picture is up. Because it's the same thing that I kind of looked at when I was out there. I did not detect, I mean, there is a, there is some slope down. And I think that there's been some work on it that's been done in the meantime. When I drove by, it did not look all that steep. And I was wondering if, 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 since this has been changed, if, if there had been some grading work on it, done on it. Uh but some quantification of just what this, what this steepness is.
Yes, sir, can I say something?
Yes, please.
Um, yeah, so uh yes, uh that's true. So what we did was uh, uh we dropped the garage slab. Just a tiny bit, so that we can grade uh to make it more safer. But still, it's, it's like a, it's, it's still very steep. Hello?
Yep, nope. I'm just writing, sorry, just writing notes.
No, I, I thought like I lost you.
So, so Mister Chair, could I ask a follow-up question on that?
Yes, please.
So um so uh you've lowered the garage slab a little bit to grade off the driveway. But the intent of this proposal is to keep uh so sort of to the right of the garage where we're seeing, where the new proposed drive it would be. The grade would be uh the existing grade uh basically paved, but on that steep slope, or are you? Are you also proposing to level it out?
No, it uh, sorry, we, we dropped that uh area also just a little bit, graded a little bit. So that we could boost the dumpster up. So uh even for now. So it's, it's going to mask the whole grade. We cannot lower too much because it's a lot of uh less there, so there's no uh way we could do that. Uh we'll do the best we can, uh grade it really nicely. And then um uh that's what we were trying to do.
Okay, so it is, from the, from the photo we looked at, it is um not as steep as it was originally.
Right.
Okay.
Mister Chairman?
Mr. Dupont?
So in looking up and down the street, I, I realize it may be a bit steeper, at least in that photo, than some of the other. Properties on the street, but it's not significant. I think they all sort of share the same configuration and row, that row of houses. So that's one issue. And I do realize that somebody to the immediate right of that property. Has put pavers in and really expanded the area uh of what would be the driveway. Probably beyond the twenty feet, but my question is, what's the actual existing width of the driveway? As, because I can't tell from the plan what it is. I know what they're looking to expand to. But I'm wondering if just going to the twenty feet gives enough room to make, you know, a three-point turn. If you need to do so, and if you're, if you've pulled in frontways and you need to back out and you. Have a little bit more room as opposed to looking for a variance, because you know, we've discussed this tonight and. Looking at the conditions for variance that, you know, have to do with lot-shaped topography or soil condition that are different than. Other houses in the district, I just don't see the difference unless there's something I'm missing. Just leads me to question, you know, what about twenty feet? Is there enough there? Uh if you just make it twenty feet, I have no idea what the existing is, but the width.
Right, um. See if I can. Figure this out here. Right now, it appears. Looks now to, but probably seventeen feet, maybe? Just scaling the drawing that's here.
Uh I, I believe uh it was twenty, uh twenty feet before. Yeah, I believe it was, because the car part was twenty-four. So uh it was a little bit uh narrower than a curb, so I, I believe it was twenty feet. Uh the thing is, uh Mystic Street doesn't have like a on-street parking. So um basically, we have like uh right now, uh three parking. One in the garage and two outside. Let's say a third car came, they have nowhere to go. Um uh there is no uh side street nearby to park there and walk. There is like, but there is like a five, six houses down other side, and I, I don't even know like if uh. Um it's okay to park there. And one is across the street. So you have to really have to cross the street every time you park on somebody else's road, right? So um. Yeah, the, the additional park on this uh, parking on the side will give, it's, it's not, I'm not looking for a privilege or any comfortness. It's just out of necessity. Um. There is like, if there is like a two or three people came to visit, then they have nowhere to park. So just trying to uh be a little bit uh, you know, um. What's the word? Um in a. Safe situation, then like every time, um have to uh put on a hazard light and a park over there or something like that.
Yeah. So is there really no parking allowed on Mystic Street?
It's, it's a highway, so.
Oh, I see, okay. As I say, there, there's no signs.
Probably shouldn't even park there for a couple of minutes, because uh it's really dangerous getting out of the car. When cars are coming from behind.
That's what I had to do.
So you know.
Okay.
On Beverly Street, across the street.
Are there? Other questions or comments from the board? See, now I'm gonna go ahead and open the hearing for public comment. Um as I said before, the board takes public comment as relates to the matter at hand. It should be directed to the board for the purpose of helping inform our decision. Uh you can digitally raise your hand using the raised hand feature in Zoom. If you're calling in, you made L star nine, you were called upon by the chair. And asked for your questions and comments. With that, uh we have a raised hand from Mr. Moore.
Uh yes, Mister Chair, Steve Moore, Piedmont Street. I uh, I know that you all missed my comments. Uh but I was not able to join you earlier, so I figured I would just jump in now.
There you go. We missed you on Washington Street.
Yeah, yeah. It looked like uh there were a lot of interesting earlier cases. Uh I guess I would um. Uh I would ask, is the applicant planning, and I think this gets to where Mr. Riccadelli was going. Is the driveway being proposed next to the house going to be built into the slope or at the slope? Because they will have two very different looks, depending on what the choice is. I guess as a dumpster, they will, but. Uh what is the intent of the applicant?
Go ahead and explain.
Question for me?
Yep, there's a question for you, Sid. A little about, about the topography.
Yeah, sure. So uh we, we will be just matching the uh driveway uh slope and that uh. Side hill uh to the same slope, we'll just follow the contour and we'll, uh I'm thinking to either like a, use a paver. Uh or uh ask for to pave it.
Okay, Mister Chair, what that, what that says to me, though I, I think I understand what was said. Uh is that they'll have to be removing a great deal of uh. Of uh fill that's there right now to match the driveway against what is now held back by a retaining wall. Or maybe it's been dug out for a dumpster, I'm not quite sure which. Um so it sounds like it's built into the slope. Um my first question would be, does that undermine the wall that's being built next to, number one? Number two, how close are those very large trees that are on the neighbor's property immediately to the right? To this construction? That, that's my question.
Yeah. Ravindra?
Sorry, is that to me?
Yes, sir.
Oh, sorry. This is my first time, so. Yeah, so uh there is a small bushes, which is on the neighbor's property. Uh and uh there is no major tree, there is one tree uh right near the uh street. But uh that is also maybe six, seven feet like a uh on their property, which is not ours. So uh when you say like a uh significant amount of uh soil that need to be removed. Uh we just uh follow the contour, that's so uh it's not much, like uh you know, we are not undermining the house. Or anything like that. So when uh when you come up with uh uh pavers, it uh, we are still above the. Uh like a uh house foundation, so we are not undermining the house there.
Okay, Mister Chair, that I, I, I see, that does, that does make sense. Thanks for putting that picture back up. Um I don't, the, the trees that I'm looking at look to be pretty close to the property line, not six feet out. And I'm wondering, would this construction undermine that very large tree? Because my guess is it might. You're not supposed to disturb soil in the critical root zone of such a large tree. It's hard to tell what its diameter is of your neighbor's tree there, but it, the, the critical root zone, it's an inch per. Uh one foot per inch of uh diameter breast height. So if that tree is maybe ten inches across. Uh you would need some odd ten feet out from the side that. You, you would have to protect the critical root zone of those neighboring trees, but you're planning to be digging this out some night, I guess.
Um there, when, when we remove some of the soil, we never like a maybe either the uh tree roots are deep. Or there is none towards this side, because we haven't encountered any obstruction or anything like that. And also that tree, that the whole thing is, is tilting towards the house. So it's, it's not really neighbor's issue, but probably it's, it's ours. Uh you know, uh if it causes any like a safety issue to the house, I'd be just because it's tilting towards the house. Uh maybe need to do something about it.
Oh, I understand that the, the issue related to a safety concern, but that would be for you and your neighbor to, to work out, I would, I would think. Um I, I guess. My, I, I assume this house was recently purchased, and it was purchased with all of these conditions already existing. And purchased as, as was. Uh and now we're asking to change them and asking for a variance of, of what is a standard driveway width maximum. To, to do this accommodation, and I just. Uh am, am wondering why furthering, you know, or adding to a non-conformity. Or adding a non-conformity is uh is okay to go with necessarily. When it was sort of known that these were limitations of the property when you bought it.
When, when we uh bought the house, uh we knew that the, it was in a really uh uh rough situation. But then uh it was in a really nice neighborhood, uh really nice uh uh family neighborhood and all that. So uh there had to be a little bit of something like to make it more safer had to be done. Uh you know, if you look at the current picture, uh that even though that, that driveway was twenty foot uh wide. Uh if you pull one car, then you wouldn't be able to feed another, because both sides were, were the walls. So a- all you had was one parking inside and one parking outside. So when you have this uh couple of friends or families came over, you, you really didn't have anything. It was a like a no parking at all. So uh every time you uh pull on the side of the street. Um it's, it's creating uh like a dangerous situation to uh other people, to yourself. And uh if you pull over there for a couple of minutes, you will find out, it's, it's not really a good situation there. So um yes, I, I knew there had, something had to be done, that's why we had to go through variance. And I'm requesting like a, you know, this is what we are planning to do, this is what we are doing. And it will just make things better, better for uh everyone.
Okay, Mister Chair, I, I understand, I, I uh, I just, I'm never a fan of, of putting. Trees in danger for convenience and, and also adding less permeable. Though I guess it's still permeable pavers, it's certainly less than, than, than opened. Thank you, Mister Chair.
Thank you, Mister Moore. Are there any other members of the public who wish to address this hearing? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close public comment for this hearing. Uh so what the board has before it, this is an application for a variance. Um because the driveway is, as it is today, is compliant at a twenty foot or less than twenty feet in width. Um leading to parking uh under the house. And the request is to widen that um to approximately thirty-four feet. So uh that would. Uh require, uh sure, almost thirty-five feet, so would require a variance for the additional width. So as we had noted on an earlier hearing, uh variances are uh controlled by. Chapter forty-eight, section ten of the Mass General laws. And it requires that the zoning board of appeals must find that all four criteria is are met in order to be authorized to grant a. And it requires that the zoning board of appeals must find that all four criteria are met in order to be authorized to grant a variance. If any one of the standards are not met, the board is not allowed to grant a variance. Uh, so the four criteria, the first is to describe the circumstances related to soil condition, shape or topography, especially affecting such land or structures, but not affecting generally the zoning district in which it's located. Those substantiate the granting of a variance. Second is describe how the literal enforcement of the provisions of the zoning bylaw specifically related to the circumstances affecting the land or structures noted above would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, the partitioner or the applicant. Uh, third is describe how desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. And the fourth is describe how desirable relief may be granted without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of the zoning bylaw of the town of Arlington. Um, so I would, uh, return to the applicant and sort of so the, the first criteria is to describe the circumstances related to the soil conditions. So something about the soils of the site, uh, the shape, the shape of a lot or the topography. So the, the slopes or whatnot, especially affecting this property or structure, but not generally affecting the zoning district. Um, so if, could you sort of explain to us what it, what is sort of unique about this property? That does not apply to the other properties around it.
Um, so, uh, what I, what I can tell you is, uh, the neighboring houses don't have this kind of contour. They, they do, but, uh, it's much lesser than, uh, our house is, is, uh, the driveway and, uh, the house is, uh, most on a steeper hill than any others on this, uh, area. Uh, one in the left is kind of like a little similar, but then it's gradually, uh, goes like, uh, uh, the hill goes like, uh, more like a smaller and smaller on that side and same with on the right hand side. So somehow that point is the highest point. And, um, that is that. And, uh, all other neighborhood, like, uh, you know, the neighbor's driveway, uh, they, although they have a flat driveway, they, they either have a, uh, like a horseshoe, um, uh, driveway, or, uh, they have like a larger car, cars. When I asked the building department, uh, why they had that, they told, uh, me that, uh, it was done without the permits. So, um, that I was told that, um, but you know, I, I wanna go through proper process and a proper thing to do, right thing to do. That's why I, I, uh, I'm here today. So.
Yeah. So sort of as a force or what their sense is, um, I mean, certainly the soil, there's no specific soil condition here. There's no, yeah, the applicant has noted that there is ledge under the house, which has impacted the the size of the garage under the house. Um, but the, but there is still, um, the provision of the, of a singles, uh, parking space, which is, uh, what's required under the bylaw. Um, that there's the shape of a lot is essentially rectangular, um, and similar to other houses on this side of, oh, up and down Mystic, uh, but there has been, uh, the statement that this site is, um, has additional topography in relation to the houses on the other side. Um, which is creating the, the hardship that, uh, he's trying to resolve by widening the driveway. Um, and you know, I appreciate his comment about the, um, you know, houses on adjacent lots, uh, and, and the, uh, the illegal parking spaces, the, the unpermitted parking spaces. Um, I do greatly appreciate him coming before the board to do this properly. Um, but I would ask the board what their sense is about whether we can make a finding in relation to the first criteria. That there is something, there's a circumstance that that is specific to this site, but not to the district in general.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hanlon.
Um, I mean, I think it's all a matter of degree and that to some extent that the changes that have been made in the project since some of the pictures were taken have addressed some of the problem. I'm inclined to agree with Mr. Dupont that it's, that at most it's a matter of degree. It doesn't seem to me to be very different from all of the other places that essentially share the same, the same retaining. Um, I do think that in dealing with this, you can't deal in dealing with the issue of soil, uh, slope, shape and topography. You have to say, what is the hardship that they relate to? Um, if the question is, is it really creating an unsafe condition? I, I mean, everybody can disagree about that, but on the basis of going there and I drive along this area constantly, I do not believe actually that there's any safety issue at all. Uh, when I move, when I turned around in other, uh, at other houses, it's perfectly easy to back out. I understand that Mystic gets to be busy sometimes, but uh, that's a problem that everybody who lives on Mystic has to deal with. Uh, and I don't really see how the changes that are proposed would significantly alleviate a safety problem if that were really what the hardship was. I think the hardship here is really simpler than that. I think it's that you just can't get as as many parking spaces onto the property as the applicant would like to have. He was quite forthright in saying that no, you, if he has guests, he has a party, there's no place for the people to park because there's not the room to park on site. And it's that, that's really what the problem is, is that doing this allows at least some guest parking and some parking beyond the minimum and even beyond the minimum plus one. So in this respect, it's quite different from the first case that, uh, that we heard where the problem was that there were, you could get too many cars on the site. This time it's really too small. Um, I just don't know that. It seems to me that, that that is potentially shareable. I mean, that's really a product of there not being much space. I don't think that's primarily a product of the topography. Uh, and I'm not sure, once you've got a couple of parking spaces on there, I'm not sure that it's a hardship that you can't get one or two more.
Well, thank you, Mr. Hanlon. When I, when I look at this, I'm, I, when I first looked at the application, um, I was concerned that I don't think it meets the first criteria. Because I don't see the site as being, um, you know, having specific circumstances that are unique to this site that are not generally affecting the zoning district, uh, because I see this as a, you know, a long run of buildings, um, along Mystic that are all sort of in the same boat. Um, and while I appreciate that the, you know, the applicant is, um, you know, is concerned about the safety and is trying to, uh, you know, forestall any issues in regards to there not being enough parking, uh, should there be guests at the property? Um, I'm not sure that I see this site as being, uh, one where a variance would be appropriate, um, especially because there's nothing in particular about the issues with the site that directly lead to the need for additional parking spaces. That it's just a function of the street it's on. And there are lots of streets that have different parking restrictions. Um, and I just don't see that as being, uh, the, the, the addition of parking is, I don't see that as being related to any of the site, uh, any of the issues that potentially may exist with the site. But I would welcome being dissuaded. I could possibly see having like a dog leg out to the side where if somebody was to drive into the driveway straight, park in the garage, they could back out and do a three-point turn. So they're facing straight coming out of the Mystic Street, like that would address the the concern about the, the safety of the site. Um, but again, I'm not sure there is anything particular about this site that would rise to the level of a variance.
Um, when, uh, when, uh, when I say about like, it's not, uh, uh, like, uh, similar to other properties is because this one has a very short, uh, driveway and it just because it's a steep, uh, slope. Um, other, uh, other houses in the nearby, they, they also maybe a little bit, either they have longer driveway or may, maybe they have, uh, flat, uh, land. So, um, just being on the slow, um, e- even in the winter time, even, uh, forget about the parking, right? When, when you walk there, probably you're gonna just slip and fall too. Uh, it's, it's that kind of situation. So if you try to pull over the car like a really abruptly, if, if you, if you have nowhere to go, wha- what I was thinking was like, if you could go to the right, just park your car, leave the, uh, uh, front, uh, driveway for the, uh, car to go in the garage. So every time, uh, when you trying to, uh, take one car out from the garage, just because the one car has to be inside the garage. So to move that car is, there is nowhere else that you can just maneuver to, uh, to, to, you know, you just have to come back outside to the Mystic Street, which is a highway. So you can park your car. You can leave your car for two minutes. So it's really, really tight situation there and, and a slow slope doesn't help. So, uh, that's the situation there.
Other opinions from the board?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Little Blank.
Um, I'm kind of falling behind what other members of the board have been saying that, um, I don't think the condition here is significantly different than other buildings on, along this side of the, of Mystic Street, um, that it's a pretty prevalent condition along these, these rows of houses and, um, you know, I kind of generally agree that I think really what this is getting a little bit about is just adding more parking to, uh, to the site. And I'm just a little bit concerned about, um, adding more parking in general. I think it's starting to get against, um, some of the goals of the town in general. Um, you know, as a town, we're trying to not add vehicles, I think, as, as an overall town goal. Um, so I just want us to be cognizant of that as well as we start to see a lot more of these types of, um, special permits or variances in front of us.
The chairman, I have a question for you.
Mr. Hanlon.
Um, I want to go back to the question. I, it's not completely clear that this is feasible to do. Um, but there really are two parts to the applicant's application. One of it is just, it's putting more within the driveway that is, that is to the front. Uh, and the other is adding a whole new parking space on the side guard. Um, and the question I have is whether it would be feasible if the issue is to provide for ease of turning around and is, and, and is not uh, just squeezing in another parking space. Is there enough room there to do that by putting in a turning around? That may require help from us. Um, but at least it would be, in some ways, it would make me feel a little bit happier to know that I'm dealing with a genuine safety situation and being able to facilitate people getting in and out of the site. That seems to me a more compelling issue than getting one or, you know, getting as many, much parking on the side as you can. But I don't really know if that works. There's 14.8 feet that's between the existing building and I assume it's the retaining wall. Uh, I don't know if there's enough room to put a turnaround in there and that's kind of a space or not.
But it would be 35 feet from the opposite side of the driveway.
Right.
So, I mean, I, I would think there would be space to do, you know, if you were doing it, if you had a T, you just have the leg of the T going towards the property line so that you pull straight into the drive in front of the garage. And then if you needed to turn around, you could pull, you could back into that pullout and then pull forward that you're coming out onto Mystic Street driving straight. Um, that would allow for some increase in safety, but would not be, you know, creating additional parking spaces up the side of the house.
I was just thinking that if, if the hardship is basically that it's not safe enough. And I know that I, there's, there the question about safety is something on which the evidence is not tremendously strong. But if you really thought intuitively that the issue was safety and that that was enough of a hardship and related enough to, to what the applicant would like to do, um, to, to do that, that would be a solution that I would feel more comfortable dealing with. Uh, and a problem I feel more comfortable dealing with, uh, than with just the general amount of parking on the site.
Unfortunately, none of that gets to the question of the first test as to whether or not this property qualifies for the issue of a variance. I drove up and down Mystic today. I stopped by the house today. Just don't get the sense that there's something you, there's something different about this property. Um, you know, other properties have driveways that have slopes. Some of them are steeper. Some of them are not as steep. Some houses are closer. Some houses are farther away. Um,
The house, uh, I'm sorry.
Nope, go right ahead.
Yeah. Um, uh, the house, uh, next to, uh, my house is, uh, significantly smaller in size. But they had, they did like, uh, the same thing, uh, uh, like I did, they did the pavers on the side so that they can turn around. I don't know how they did it, but they, they, they have. So all, all the houses have more parkings than just, just two parkings. So, um, just because the size of the house is a little bigger, uh, and you know, it's, um, uh, and the others have more parkings. So, um, I just wanna be more like a safer one when pulling in and out. Like, uh, I, I, I'm pretty sure when you went there, uh, it, it wasn't like a pulling into, uh, like a regular house. It's, it's, it's kind of scary to, uh, I'm not exaggerating because I go there every day. So I, I know what I'm, what I'm saying. So, uh, yeah, that's the, the request I wanna make is, is, you know, just, just, uh, otherwise spending, uh, that kind of money for, uh, just to have like one more car in there, it doesn't make sense. So, um, I just wanna make it safer so that, uh, in future, the kids, uh, coming out or driving out or somebody pulling in, uh, whatever. If it's like a little bit wider, you'll have a better vision of the street and all, all those kind of things. It will, uh, definitely make and all, all those kind of things. It will definitely make it a lot more safer.
I sort of turned to other members of the board, like the state law doesn't start from that point. The state law starts from, there has to be something about the soil condition, shape or topography of this particular piece of land that does not generally affect the board, the the district. So the, the question back before the board is, you know, does this property meet that criteria? And the, you know, the benefit, the potential benefit of the work that is being proposed unfortunately is not, doesn't come in until we've gotten past this question.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Riccadelli.
I, I would, you know, echo what the other board members mentioned before. I, I, I don't think for me, it, it does meet that threshold because, you know, I, I drive down the street, you know, every other day and there's many, many of these similar conditions down Mystic Street. You know, I understand what the applicant is, is commenting on in the safety, it sometimes can be, people can drive kind of fast there, but I don't think we even need to broach the topic if we can't get by the first criterion, so.
All right, so how to proceed at this point? So we could do, so in the past, when we have done variance cases, we've done a straw poll on the questions. And so we could do, do that as well. And if we agree on all four, with a positive result for all four questions, then we can proceed to discussion of conditions for the application, but I unless there's objections from the board, I think we really need to just do a straw poll for how we feel about these four questions and see if we have enough positive votes in order to to proceed to the, to a decision on a variance. Or if we don't meet the cri, if we don't feel that the project meets the criteria, then we will need to prepare a decision to deny the, the variance application.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hanlon.
Can I suggest that we, I mean, given the discussion that we've had, we haven't really talked about the third and fourth conditions at all, and we've talked a little bit about the second one, but that only relates, but only in relationship to the first. And I have the sense that if we take a straw discussion or straw vote or whatever on the first, we'll find that it's dispositive of the whole. And I suggest that we do that, and if it's clear that there's not enough support on the board for the notion that it meets the first condition that that we end it there and not spend the rest of the evening dealing with the others when the first one is dispositive, it has to meet that or it can't be granted.
Okay. So with that, would do a a roll, I guess the best way to do this is a roll call vote of the board is what we've done in the past. On these criteria, so in regards to three twenty-two Mystic Street, the first condition that is required for a special permit would be a finding that the circumstances relating to the soil conditions, shape or topography, especially affecting such land or structures, but not affecting generally the zoning districts in which it is located, that would substantiate the granting of a variance. So if you feel that that, that the finding has been met, then the vote would be yes, and if you feel that that has not been met, then the vote would be no. So I will do a vote of the members of the board. Yeah, so we'll do, we'll do a vote of everybody. Because this is just getting a sense of the board. So with that, in regards to whether the first circa, the first criteria has been met, Mr. DuPont.
No.
Mr. Hanlon?
No.
Mr. Riccadelli?
No.
Ms. Hoffman?
No.
Mr. LeBlanc?
No.
And the chair says no. So with that, the first criteria for the variance is not met. And as a positive vote is required for all four, the board is not authorized to grant a variance on this application. So the or so the step, next step of the board, we would vote, hold a vote to close the public hearing for this docket. We would then prepare a decision based on the inability to move forward with the variance and then that would be voted on as the decision of the board at our hearing on July ninth. So with that, the chair will accept a motion to close the public hearing for docket three eight zero four three twenty-two Mystic Street.
So moved.
Thank Mr. DuPont. So a vote of the board to close the public hearing, Mr. DuPont?
Aye.
Mr. Hanlon?
Aye.
Mr. Riccadelli?
Aye.
Hoffman?
Aye.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So the public hearing for three twenty-two Mystic Street is closed. Appreciate the applicant coming before us, sticking with us through this late evening. I'm, I'm sorry, there does not appear to be better news.
No worries. It is what it is, and thank you very much for everyone. Hopefully, there won't be any accident so that there will be third accident soon.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
All right, so that is the end of the public hearings for tonight. As we've said a couple of times, our next hearing is July ninth. We did continue a couple of items to that. One was the Washington. And one was two thirty-two Mass Ave. Colleen, what is July ninth looking like at this point? Colleen, still with us? I hope she may have had to step away.
No, I, I was trying to, it wasn't unmuting, sorry. I was trying to read off the novice thing. So we have the two that we continued for tonight. And then one oh nine Wright Street, which I believe is a addition and thirty-nine Amherst. And I think they're both additions of some sort with non-conformance.
Okay, they're both special permits?
Yes. And nothing else.
Awesome, thank you. And you had said before that for July twenty-third, you were thinking there were a couple that were under consideration, but they hadn't been assigned yet.
That is correct. There's two of them that I have till next week to send out their legal notices. So if they're good to go, then we'll send them out.
Okay. Perfect. So I will talk to Colleen tomorrow about setting up a date and time to go visit Washington Street. With it being a little bit lighter later in the day, would it be easier for folks to make an early evening? Like around six o'clock, would that sort of make, help people? I know that during the day is often difficult for some folks.
Thursday would be impossible for me at six, otherwise evenings are harder actually for me than the daytime, but but I could probably make six on other nights, but not that one.
Would people be able to make like five or is that cutting it close?
Are we talking this Thursday?
I'm flexible.
I don't know a date, but just sort of in general, would people be able to make a five o'clock work?
Yeah. Yeah.
All right.
Christian, I'm assuming it'll be next week if he has to do a drawing and other stuff, right? Or do you think it'll be this week?
Yeah, I think it would probably be next week.
Oh, so we're going for his barbecue.
So I, I would be aiming for two, for next Tuesday at five, if that's a possibility.
Second.
Yeah.
I think that would work for me.
Okay. Colleen, if you don't mind just reaching out to them and seeing if that works for them.
Okay. Thank you.
And with that, unless there's anything else, I would like to thank you all for your participation in tonight's meeting of the Arlington Zoning Board of Appeals. Appreciate everyone's patience throughout this long meeting. I would especially like to thank Colleen Ralston, Mike Champa for their assistance in preparing for and hosting our online meeting. Please note the purpose of the board's recording of the meeting is to ensure the creation of an accurate record of our proceedings. It is our understanding that recordings made by ACMI will be available on demand at acmi.tv within the coming days. If anyone has comments or recommendations, please send them via email to zba@town.earlington MA.us. That email address is also listed on the Zoning Board of Appeals website. And to conclude tonight's meeting, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So roll call vote of the board to adjourn, Mr. DuPont.
Aye.
Mr. Hanlon?
Aye.
Mr. Riccadelli?
Aye.
Ms. Hoffman?
Aye.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, we are adjourned.
ACMI productions are only made possible with your support. Visit patreon.com slash ACMI to learn how you can help.